Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Dare County July 20 Board of Commissioners meeting this evening. I'd like to start the meeting off with an invocation that was provided to us. It was offered by Reverend Craig Peel. Gracious, loving God, we thank you that in this time of deep uncertainty, you have your ear tuned to us once again. Lord, you know that day after day, we find ourselves experiencing a whole variety of emotions in the face of this menacing virus. We're filled with hope and faith, but we're also sometimes feeling anxious and fearful, isolated, frustrated, and angry. These are difficult days to serve in places of leadership. Our commissioners are called to reassure us and shape policies and decisions which work for our common good, but they are sometimes targeted for blame and accusations. So we thank you for their willingness to serve in a time of duress. Give them thick skins where truth demands it and grace fill pliability when fresh, creative thanking is asked of them. We pray that you will walk beside them and speak through them as they address each item on tonight's agenda. May they listen attentively as public comments are shared. Where decisions are called for, grant them the gift of thoughtful reflection and discussion and respect for those with whom they may defer. Grant them tonight and each day your guidance, grace, so that they may walk by no door which leads to your will. Faithful God, shower your blessings upon them and our beloved country. Guard and protect them and each county employee laboring for our welfare, whether in public view or in more hidden places of service. All these prayers, we ask so that your holy name may be honored in this place. Amen.
Amen.
May we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeguised, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item one on the agenda is the chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, county manager. Just really one major, I'll take that back, two major things I'd like to address this evening. And this may sound like a broken record to many, but I just would like to, once again, encourage our residents, our visitors, to please take this pandemic serious. Please do what you can. I know there's a lot of frustration on a lot of people's parts about wearing a mask, but please do it in public, in social distance, and just follow the recommendations, you know, and wash your hands. Wait, wash, and social distance. And I can't say it enough, I know it sounds like a broken record, but we encourage our citizens and our residents to at least abide by those, owe to respect for one another. The only other item I have this evening, it comes with mixed emotions on this board's part. I usually come down front to do this, but I'm trying to keep my social distancing. It's kind of hard to sit up here and talk with a mask on, but I will put this on when I come down front in just a minute. It's mixed emotions that I bring this subject up and talk about this individual because I have nothing but the utmost respect for him. Jerry Jennings. Jerry began his work for NC DOT back in May of 1989 as an engineering assistant. Jerry moved up through the ranks at NC DOT as maintenance and project development until being named the division engineer in February of 2009. So Jerry's had a long tenure with NC DOT. In that length of time, Jerry oversaw responses to some of Dare County's most important storm damages that we've ever seen, and certainly in our lifetime, Jerry. Damages including Hurricane Irene, Sandy, Matthew, Dorian, I mean, the list goes on and on of what you've seen in your career. As a division engineer, Jerry was responsible for overseeing, directing, and managing multimodal activities and programs in Division One, and I'll share with you in a minute how big Division One is. And he was responsible for the design and construction and maintenance and safety of state-maintained roads and structures within 14 counties, 14 counties geographical area that stretched from I-95 into Northampton County all the way into Okeechobee Island. In Dare County, that meant major improvements to NC-12. And I mean, that was annually, Jerry, as you very well know, sometimes weekly in the summer months, including the Etheridge Bridge, which we referred to as the Lego Bridge. But, you know, that was done in record time under your position as division engineer. The replacement of 55-year-old Bonner Bridge with the Mark Bassnight Bridge. I mean, Jerry, you know how many years you worked on that, your whole career. It was incredible. The Rhodanthe Jug Handle Bridge, that's currently under construction. I mean, who would have thought we've had three bridges in the last three or four years come to bear in Dare County when it took 30 years just to get one approved? So that in itself is phenomenal. He's been in charge of and constant maintenance and clearing of NC-12 in the wake of nor'easters and other storms that bring ocean overwashing sand onto the nation's most unique highway. I don't have to tell anybody in this room or any commissioner sitting here, I mean, they're out there pushing sand up on the dunes in the middle of a storm, and you got two and three feet of water on the highway. I mean, these guys are incredible. And we never would have to pick up the phone and say, hey, Jerry, what's going on? I mean, they were there like clockwork, just like this. Jerry was in charge of projects that helped maintain important access and evacuation routes into and out of Dare County, including the refurbishment of both the Wright Memorial Bridge. None of this anymore, Jerry, hoping over that. The Alligator River Bridge, future projects, including the upcoming improvements to Collington Road, which has been postponed again, which is understandable under these certain circumstances that we face in our country now. All of this is going to be a part of your legacy, Jerry, and I'm sure you're very proud of your accomplishments. Jerry was always responsive to this board. Not one time had I ever reached out to Jerry or our county manager or anybody sitting at this diocese and called Jerry and asked for his help, that he wasn't Johnny on the spot and responding. He was just phenomenal when it came to response and managing the duties of Division One. He personally provided updates on transportation projects in District One to all of elected officials in all 14 counties. He never hesitated if we asked him to come speak at one of these board meetings, and in my last eight years, every time we asked him to be here, he came, he faced the music. It wasn't always pretty, but he faced the music and he told us straight up what the facts were and what took place. And I respect you for that, Jerry, for being upfront and honest with us. And he was very good about keeping us and the citizens informed. Here's a little overview of District One when I mention 14 counties. Bertie, Camden, Chawan, Currituck, Dare, Gates, Hertford, Hyde, Martin, Northampton, Pasquetank, Proquemmons, Terrell, Washington. I miss any, Jerry?
I think that's it.
Eleven airports, 5,208 road miles, over 10,000 lane miles, five ferry routes. Major Dare County projects, $252 million Bonner Bridge replacement, $416.7 million renovations to Alligator River Bridge in 2017, $21 million refurbishment of Wright Memorial Bridge, and $145.33 million in Rhodanthe Jug Handle Bridge. I can remember, I didn't even mention the power outage on Harris Island from the damage that occurred at the bridge under construction of the Mark Bassnight Bridge. Jerry worked tirelessly with his staff and solved that problem in record time. I mean, we were down there, myself and I know the vice chairman, the county manager, several of us were down there looking in that same hole, wondering, wow, how are we going to get this done? And that was done in record time. Jerry, it's with mixed emotions that we say goodbye, but we certainly understand your retirement, and we hope you, wish you quite a bit of relaxation in your retirement, and it's well deserved. And I have something down front I'd like to present to you.
Well, thank you so much. If I could just say a couple of quick words.
Absolutely.
You know, I was one person of a big team of DOT professionals, so it's certainly a team effort dealing with all the challenges that we have. You know, the first experience I had dealing with some of the unique issues in Dare County goes back to Hurricane Emily in 1993. And since that time in DOT in Dare County, have worked together to resolve some pretty unique problems over the years. And many of them, I'm certainly proud to have been a part of, there are few I just soon forget. But it's always been a pleasure to work with this board and work with the county staff, and thank you so much for having me here this evening.
Thank you, Jerry. Let me come down.
Chairman, may I add while you're coming down?
Yes, sir.
The chairman's talked a bunch about all the hard work and things at DOT, and Jerry's talked about his team and the things that they've done, but I want to talk a second about Jerry. I've known him for a long time, and I've called him about a lot of things, and I'm sure sometimes he wasn't all that excited to get my call. But the smile that he's got on his face right now is always what received me on the other end. I can't think of a more humble man, I can't think of a guy who was more pleasant in challenging situations and who had a level head and did the right thing and tried to help us do the right thing at all times. It's something that we that work in government aspire to do, and you hit it right on the head. And so I thank you for that for all these years and for all that you did, but more importantly, for always be willing to try to help us get the yes if it was possible. And you always did that, and you always did that in your humble, unassuming way with a smile on your face. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Bob.
Dare was always Jerry's favorite.
Jerry, this is just a small token of the board's appreciation, but it's a certificate of appreciation, Dare County Board of Commissioners, to issue to Jerry Jennings, grateful recognition of your years of distinguished service to Dare County community. Dare County Board of Commissioners is grateful for your dedication to the safety, health, and welfare of Dare County community. During 30 years' career with the North Carolina Department of Transportation, serving with honesty and integrity, he made extraordinary contributions to the transportation industry in eastern North Carolina. Your leadership, strong work ethic, and steadfast commitment to providing safe and reliable transportation are greatly appreciated and is presented to you by this board, signed by myself as chair.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We'll get your mic up here.
We're good. Okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Hey, Bob, I'd want to say something to Jerry real quick and tell you all some stories about what he did when I was at the commission of the town in Kitty Hawk. We would call him up for a bike path here or to fix a road here or do something, and he was always there for us guys. I mean, and every time, I think we did, what, four or five bike paths during the itinerary there, and first thing I was mental, we haven't got the money. But all of a sudden, the money would come from somewhere, and we would have those things. And that's very important for the kids to have a separation between the road and so they can safely ride their bikes and so forth. And he's a big part of that, and we appreciate all that you did then. And I'm going to miss you. I didn't even know about this until right now. Nobody called me and told me. But good luck.
Surprise.
Yeah.
Thanks again, Jerry. Really appreciate you being here and thank you for what you do, and God bless you. Enjoy those flip flops and shorts.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item two on the agenda is the recognition of the county employees for their service. Because of the COVID-19, we haven't been bringing the county's employees in, but we still want to recognize them. So I'll go through the list for you. First, we have Marilyn Cahoon. She's a deputy sheriff lieutenant. We recognize her for her 15 years of service. Lieutenant Cahoon has a long career in law enforcement. She retired with the NC ALE section and has continued her career here. She has 45 years in the profession and runs the daily operations of the Civil Process Division of the Sheriff's Office and includes the court bailiffs. Marilyn has a wealth of knowledge about law enforcement, but is especially the source to go to on civil law as she teaches it at COA. According to the sheriff, he has no worries when she takes care of the civil issues because there isn't much that she doesn't know, and if it doesn't stump her, she knows who to call to get the answer. Her loyalty is appreciated to the sheriff's office and to the county, and we look forward to her being around for many more years to come. Congratulations, Marilyn. I don't know if she's not the bailiff here tonight. Usually she's here.
Yeah.
Next is David Mason. Mr. Mason, Deputy Mason is a deputy sheriff master officer with 15 years of service. We recognize him for that service. Sheriff Doughty says Deputy Mason started his career at the Hyde County Sheriff's Office and then continued in Dare County. David is a longtime member of the Roanoke Island and Mainland Patrol Division and also serves as one of our field training officers. David's dad was the sheriff of Hyde County for many years, and David has followed in his footsteps by choosing this profession. He's knowledgeable about the law, and as one of the field training officers, he's able to give some of his knowledge and learn techniques to those just getting started in this profession. He's easy to get along with, and we enjoy working with him. Thank you for what you do, David, and your loyalty to this office. Next, we have Sally Carwell. Sally's a senior customer service representative with the water distribution, and she's been here for 20 years. Most of you know Sally because she's had a long career here. This is from Bula Ashby, her supervisor. Sally is a senior customer service representative, is a problem solver, and exercises courtesy, tact, and respect when interacting with coworkers, supervisors, and customers. She prepares financial reporting for the utilities directors and also handles the property transfers and final water billing for change of ownership accounts. Sally trains our new customer service reps and is an integral part of the Dare County Water Billing Department. In addition to customer service, she ensures the department's merchandise is ordered and helps to reconcile credit card statements for some water department supervisors. Sally wears many hats at the water department and provides exceptional customer service. Thank you, Sally, for your 20 years. Next is Jason McPherson. Jason is getting a 25-year pin. He's a parks maintenance crew leader in turf maintenance. This is from Jason's supervisor, Greg Diallo. Greg has noted that he has had the pleasure of working with Mr. Pearson for the past two and a half years. In that short time, he has noticed his outstanding dedication to his job. His expertise and knowledge of athletic fields is a valuable asset for the turf maintenance division, and Greg is proud to have him on his team and honored to call him a friend. Thank you, Jason, for your 25 years. Next is Tola Edmund. Tola is an in-home service aide with DSS Personal Care Services, and tonight she's being recognized for her 25 years of service. From Chuck Wissette, the director, he says, "Tola has a heart of gold. She is passionate about what she does and only provides the best services to her clients. Tola is always willing to help fill in or to help out when it's needed. We are very fortunate to have Tola as a part of our team, and we look forward to many more years of service and her good humor." Thank you, Tola. And then finally, we have Mary Tonda Cudrel, emergency medical tech paramedic with EMS Services. Tonight, she's being recognized with a 30-year pin. This is from Jenny Collins, our EMS director. Tonda was hired as an EMT intermediate in 1990 and currently the most tenured active member in Dare EMS. She came to Dare County as she had family in the area. She started to work at Wan Chee's Marina with her aunt and also made ends meet by working at the Dunes Restaurant. Tonda's cousin, Sylvia Willis, was working for Dare EMS and encouraged her to become a certified EMT and try to get hired with EMS. Tonda followed that advice. After receiving her certification and being hired, Tonda continued her EMS education and training and became a paramedic in 1998. For the last 15 years, Tonda has been assigned to Dare Med Flight. She's also obtained flight paramedic certification. Tonda is a hard worker and never shies away from any task. She has a quick wit that others find to make the long EMS shifts move a little faster. As the hours are often filled with smiles and laughter, Tonda has voiced that she plans to retire at the end of this calendar year. It is not often to find a paramedic that is still in the streets after 30 years, yet Tonda is, and she's tremendously dedicated. So thank you, Tonda, for your 30 years. With that, Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda is public comment. We take public comment via email, and so we'll break for just a second while you check your emails account to see if we get any public comment.
Okay. Thank you, county manager.
Okay. Chairman, that brings us to item four on the agenda. This is the Beechland Farms Campground CUP, its site can review. This is a conditional use permit, and under conditional use permit, this is what's called a quasi-judicial hearing. And so tonight, you'll be asked to listen to testimony from both the applicant and from others who are here to voice their concerns and to present evidence to you. Please understand that because this is a quasi-judicial hearing, that everything that is said here has to be spoken under oath tonight, and that you're only able to make your decisions based on what you hear from evidence tonight, what you hear out in the community, if you've been emailed, if somebody's called you on the phone. None of that stuff is relevant, is admissible, or is information that you can use to make your decision. It's only what's heard tonight. That's not our rule, that's the statute, that's what the law is with regard to conditional use permits. The other thing to understand and for the people that are listening to understand is that under a conditional use permit, your only function is to determine conditions that might be placed on the property based on the evidence and the admissible evidence that you hear here tonight. You do not have the option to deny it. It is a permitted use under our ordinance. You do have the authority to condition the use and put conditions to try to address concerns that might be real and proven concerns. The procedure as we go forward is everyone who speaks will be given an oath. Cheryl will do that in a block beginning before we start. We'll start with our planning staff come in and give you an outline of what's going on, what's been requested, and talk about the case in general. The applicant's represented by counsel. He will then present the applicant's case, the information that they want you to hear as well. And then those others that are here to speak on this issue will be given an opportunity to speak as well. Because we're in COVID-19, we've got as many people in this room as we're allowed to have. But we do have others that are in 168 that this is all being live streamed so they can hear and see what we're doing. And as the people here speak and finish what they have to present, we'll ask them to leave so that we can bring those folks that are in 168 in and allow them to have an opportunity to speak as well. Finally, the rules allow that each party can ask the other party questions, and so as each speaker speaks, Mr. Chairman, if you would ask them to please, if they have any questions of the applicant, they can. And then as each speaker speaks, the applicant has the right to ask whoever the speaker is questions as well. And we'll proceed through that process until we get to the end of all those that want to speak, and until the applicant has presented all of their evidence, at which time we'll close the evidentiary side, and then you all will then hear from the applicant to make his argument, if you will, as to what they think should ought to happen. And then you'll deliberate publicly in here and make decisions on how to proceed with those conditions. So are there any questions about that procedure or anything that I've just said? With that said, Cheryl, I'd ask you to, if you haven't already, the folks that are going to speak sworn in.
Everyone that's in this room has already been sworn in.
And then Donna, if you would come forward, please.
As Mr. Outen said, this is the conditional use permit for Beechland Farms Campground, and this has been submitted by Mr. Malcolm Fearing. And I'm going to go through my staff memo that's been included in the packet, and I'm probably going to be a little bit lengthier than I normally am, but it's important that we get this information on the record tonight since it is a quasi-judicial hearing. I have been sworn in earlier this evening by the clerk. Mr. Fearing has submitted a site plan for a travel trailer park here on Roanoke Island. The site is Zoned I-1 Industrial. Under the conditional uses in the zoning ordinance, the I-1 district states, "Other uses generally intended for this district but not itemized as allowed by the Board of Commissioners." Since the I-1 district does not list travel trailer parks as a permitted use, Mr. Fearing's site plan is being handled as a conditional use permit subject to quasi-judicial procedures. In my role as the zoning administrator, I have determined that a travel trailer park is consistent with the I-1 district. This determination was based on a review of those uses that are listed in the I-1 district. Those uses include builders and contractor supplies and storage areas, construction materials processing, food and beverage processing, concrete manufacturing, and dog agility training. The I-1 district also allows all of the uses that are allowed in the C-3 commercial district, as well as all of the uses that are allowed in the C-2 commercial district. The C-3 district allows such uses as indoor and outdoor recreation, engine repairs. The C-2 district allows retail, restaurants, hotels, funeral homes, and marinas. The I-1 district is one of the highest-intensity zoning districts in unincorporated Dare County in the terms and the types of the land use that it allows. I have included a copy of the I-1 district regulations, as well as the C-3 and the C-2 district regulations in your packet so that you can read them in context, and I will also include a copy of that as an exhibit of the record file. Mr. Fearing's property is surrounded by land owned by Dare County and the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Boat Ramp to the Wildlife Resources Boat Ramp to the west, the Town and Manio Waste Water Treatment Plant to the north, there's vacant land to the south, and the Vista Lake subdivision is located to the east of Mr. Fearing's property. My determination that the I-1 District and the travel trailer park is consistent in that district is based on the scope, the type, and the intensity of the land uses. The travel trailer park is also subject to the development standards of the Travel Trailer Park Ordinance. As Mr. Outen said, this is a quasi-judicial review, and there are certain procedures that you have to follow, including the sworn testimony. During the planning board review of this, there were several individuals that spoke at the planning board in opposition of the proposed campground. Since it's a conditional use permit, that varies from a legislative decision that the board often hears. A lot of times, I appear in front of the board in terms of a zoning amendment or a zoning map amendment, a zoning text amendment, and that is a legislative decision that the board can vote yes or no on. As Mr. Outen said, this is a conditional use permit, and so the use is already permitted in the district, and what we are here tonight is to establish those reasonable and appropriate conditions that apply to the site-specific site plan. Mr. Fearing did submit a request several years ago to rezone property that was zoned residential, and at that time, because that was a legislative decision, that decision could have been voted yes or no. That varies in this. This property is Zoned I-1, and it is distinctly different than that previous request submitted by Mr. Fearing. The planning board reviewed the Beechland Farms site plan on June the 8th and voted to recommend approval of the draft conditional use permit that's in your packet, as well as the site plan. Public comments received during the planning board meeting expressed concerns about traffic, noise, open fires, trespassing, flooding, and wetland destruction. Those concerns have been addressed in the draft CUP that's included in your packet. The Beechland Farms Campground features a total of 50 campsites. The property in its entirety is 53 acres, and the campground will be located on 3.77 acres of that entire tract. The site plan does feature freshwater wetlands. The Corps of Engineers has verified the delineation of those wetlands. Under the Corps of Engineers permitting program, they do allow wetland filling under some circumstances. It allows up to 1/10 of an acre to be filled. Any wetland activity, any wetland filling activity that occurs out there will be done under the auspices of a Corps permit. There will not be broad-scale wetland destructions associated with the site plan. Relative to the flooding of the site, a stormwater management permit from the state of North Carolina will be required, and Mr. Fearing is in the process of applying for this permit. Before any activities or construction of the improvements occurs, Mr. Fearing will have to submit a copy of that stormwater management permit to the county. The Beechlands Farm will feature an internal road, recreational amenities, and bathhouse facilities as required by the Travel Trailer Park Ordinance. Each of the site meets the minimum square footage of 1,500 square feet and will consist of parking areas for the camper as well as vehicle parking. Access to the site is from Bowser Town Road, which is a state-maintained road. The site is not accessed from the Vista Lake subdivision. Under the terms of the Travel Trailer Park Ordinance, travel trailers can be left in the park on a year-round basis. They are not to be used as permanent dwellings, but the units can be left there. There is specific language in the Travel Trailer Park Ordinance that describes how those travel trailers are to be left there. This relates to the floodplain management regulations. The RVs and the travel trailers have to be left in what's described as a ready-for-highway-use state. They are only allowed to have 100 square feet of entrance landing, and they can have no other additions to the travel trailer. A copy of the lease that Mr. Fearing will be giving to the folks that come into the campground will be included as part of the process. Conditions three through five of the draft conditional use permit address the provision for the travel trailers to be left in the park on a year-round basis. The Travel Trailer Park Ordinance includes various specific vegetative buffering standards, and this buffer will be constructed as part of the preliminary site improvements. The maintenance of this buffer is addressed in Condition 9 of the draft CUP. You'll notice on the site plan that the campground adjoins the Vista Lake subdivision there along sites nine through 12 of the campground. And in addition to that, to the vegetative buffer solid fencing, six feet in height, will be installed along with that vegetative buffer to help address those concerns of the residents of that property in Vista Lake. The Travel Trailer Park Ordinance also includes removal about the removal of debris and storm-damaged travel trailers. Condition 14 in the draft CUP specifically addresses that. So, that's in the conditional use permit, and it's also in the Travel Trailer Park Ordinance. Mr. Fearing is aware of this responsibility. He's aware of the responsibility, so he knows that it's in the ordinance, he knows that it's in the conditional use permit, and so if there's a violation of that, I will be in touch with him concerning that. The total number of conditions that are in the draft CUP, there are 16 draft conditions in there. There's folks here this evening who are going to address the board, and I'm going to stop right there, and unless the board has any questions of me, I'm going to sit down, but I am available for questions now or throughout this discussion.
Thank you, Donna. Yeah, if we have any, we'll certainly ask you to step back up and answer those.
County Manager, I'll turn it back over to you for...
Yes, sir. Mr. Gallup, you're here on behalf of your clients, and I think on my list you have Mr. Fearing and Mr. Tillitt here with you as well. I'll let you take it from there on your behalf, and you let me know when you're done.
Thank you very much, Bobby. Good evening, Commissioners. Chandler Woodard. I'm Ben Gallup. I'm an attorney with the Hornthal Riley Ellis &amp; Mayland Law Firm on the beach. I'm here with the applicant, Mr. Fearing, who's in the back hiding behind his mask. And right behind me here is our engineer, Dylan Tillitt, who's also got a mask on. Ms. Creef pretty much covered most of what we're going to talk about, but I would ask her one question if I could have her come up to the microphone.
Absolutely, Ben.
I guess it's best if I come up to the microphone and ask. You prepared a memo that you were reading from when you were giving your evidence a little while ago, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And was it your opinion in your memo that the proposed travel trailer park meets the technical requirements of the Dare County zoning ordinance and the Dare County Travel Trailer Park Ordinance?
Yes, sir.
All right. That's all I had for...
Thank you, Ben.
And next, I'll just ask Mr. Fearing up, let him tell you a little bit about the project, and answer any questions you may have.
Good evening, Malcolm.
Good evening, y'all. Good to see you all back at your job here in the building. I don't know how to start this, Bobby. Do I have a three-minute limit?
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
This is the first, Malcolm.
It is, it is. First, I'd like to say that the concerns, many of those that I've heard from the adjoining community, I share those concerns. I share the concerns about the environment. I'm an avid, well, I used to be an avid hunter and fisherman, so the environment's important to me. I heard concerns about safety in the neighborhood. Well, my wife of 40 years, my mama who's past 60, my three adult daughters, and my seven grandchildren, we're out there weekly on the property, as is church groups, as is the, we've had the Dare County Elementary Schools visit our farming operation. So, the safety and control of who is on that property is most important to us, as it is in the campground that my wife owns in Wanchees. Have we had issues at that campground in the past? I mean, I think anybody that deals with the public would have to say they've had issues with people that did not agree to the standards they have in their establishment. We don't tolerate it. If there is an issue, and they're in a permanent site, a year-round site, we non-renew their lease, they're gone. If someone has alcohol, that's an adult beverage, I don't take of it, used to, don't anymore. But if it gets out of hand, if there's any, they're gone. We don't allow that. The intent of what we're trying to replicate is exactly what we're doing in Wanchees. We've operated that, I don't know how many years we've operated it, and we made a commitment to that community that we will be a good neighbor. We will take any concerns that they have with all seriousness. We will do the same thing in this campground, if it's allowed. If a six-foot vegeta, or a six-foot fence is not sufficient, I will plant illyagnus, which my son-in-law maintains, and he can't stand because it's real hard to maintain, but it's a good buffer and a good neighbor, that type of vegetation is. There's something that I feel compelled to talk about, which I've talked to you all over the years about one of the intents we had on the campground. We wanted a cabin. We were informed that a cabin would not be allowed as a, I don't know if it's an accessory use or what the proper term is. But I want to talk to you about the cabin, because I want you to understand that that is still our desire to build this cabin, which is located on the westernmost portion of the property. I think it's up there near where the parking lot is and the bathhouse and the swimming pool. What was the purpose of the cabin? The purpose of the cabin was for two-fold. If you had a child with developmental and intelligent disabilities, you could come to that cabin, overlook the wildlife environment, the marsh, the sunsets, stay there for free up to a week. That was the purpose of it. If you were a wounded vet, you could stay in that cabin up to a week for free. That was our way to give back. That is still our intention. I feel like it's important for me to say that, and probably Ben would tell me, Malcolm, you don't need to say that. But I want you to know that, because I hope that that can be done in the future. The swimming pool that was associated with the bathhouse would be handicap accessible, not by requirement, but out of a commitment that I've made to my sister who's dead now, that I would always try to advocate for those that had limited mobility. That swimming pool will be built just as I indicated, as an accessible facility. If we are fortunate enough to receive your approval, I will make my public pledge, not only to this board, or Donna's put it all in writing, so I'm doing a written pledge there, but also pledge to the neighboring community, the Vista Lake community, those that have concerns, that if they are willing to meet with me, I will try to address their concerns now and in the future. If there's an issue that is making someone in that neighborhood uncomfortable, we'll try to address it. Our family's been here 100 years. I have seven grandchildren, and I hope they're going to be here. We want to be good neighbors. So, that's what we hope to do in that project, if we're allowed to do so. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I'm not sure if we do right now, Malcolm, but be hang tight. We may have some throughout the process. So, unless, does anybody have any, Malcolm? Ben?
Mr. Chairman, I'll call Mr. Tillitt up now. I think we're going to have to share the podium so that we can both get on the microphone.
Hey, Dylan, welcome, Miss Eve.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of commissioners.
Dylan, can you tell the board your name and your occupation?
Yes, my name is Dylan Tillitt. I'm a professional engineer with Qualibon Associates.
You want me to use that mic? And, Mr. Tillitt, did you prepare the plans that are presented for this application?
Yes, I did.
And when you reviewed, prepared the plans, did you review the county ordinances during that time?
Yes, I did.
And do the plans meet all the applicable Dare County ordinance standards, to the best of your knowledge?
To the best of my knowledge, yes, sir.
And Ms. Creef talked a little bit about the size of the property and the amount of wetlands that might be filled. Can you give us the exact number that is proposed to be filled?
Yes, the exact number of wetlands proposed to be filled on this land is 2,522 square feet.
How many acres is that?
0.06 acres.
Okay, and out of a 53-acre parcel, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I believe, too, that you, we've talked before, that you've run the SEPTIC program by the Health Department, is that correct?
Yes, we have.
And they're just waiting for this process to go through before you would get SEPTIC permits?
That's correct. After this process, we'll be applying with them, but we have had preliminary conversations and discussions on the design.
And going really quickly back to the wetlands, who do you submit that permit to?
That's submitted to the United States Army Corps of Engineers.
Who else sees that?
And they submit that, and they copy that to a list of agencies. The list is federally, it goes, as I mentioned, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, the EPA, the National Marine Fisheries Services, and statewide, that goes to Department of Water Resources and the Department of Coastal Management.
So, if any of those agencies had an issue with the permit request, they'd have an opportunity to have a say about that?
Absolutely.
Okay. I don't have any more questions for Mr. Tillitt. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan, Ben, thank you all.
And that's all of our evidence.
Okay.
Unless you have any questions for Mr. Fearing or Mr. Tillitt.
Does any board member have any questions? Commissioner Ross?
Yeah, I just had two quick ones. Could you tell me the flood zone that this is, the property is in, what it's designated flood map?
This parcel is in flood zone AE4. That's the new flood zones that have recently come out.
AE4?
Yes, sir.
And is there any future plan for the other 49 acres? This is a 53-acre site, 3.77 acres will be developed, leaving approximately 49 other acres, wetlands, nature preserve?
Mr. Fearing's probably the best to answer that, Mr. Ross.
Sure, sure. I'm just curious, actually. I mean, I'm not trying to put you on the spot or anything.
You know, it's an excellent question. The delineated line on the west end of the property where the pool house is, is the core line first, okay? Then, western of that line is a camel line. So, the importance of that environment, or that view shed not to be impeded, as it is now, is the success of the campground, because most of the people that will be coming there will be wanting to come for the view shed. So, under current regulations, there cannot be any development on any non-upland area, correctly said.
That's correct.
Okay. So, there is no intention to disturb that, other than that natural, maintain that natural view shed.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mark.
I got one, Malcolm.
I have a question for the engineers, Will. Go ahead. You go ahead.
Malcolm, I got one of you. Is, do you have any kind of plan in place? Let's just say we have another dory, and it comes up. We've got 10 days to know that we've got a storm coming our way. Are there, is there any kind of plan that you're going to have in place to maybe vacate some of those more vulnerable sites of trailers there, or is it something you thought about?
That's part of the conditional use permit.
Okay.
The units that are there have to be road-ready.
Right, right.
So, if there's an evacuation order, that order goes to them also, and they're requested to leave.
So, they've got to vacate when that order comes? Okay, good.
Question for Dylan. Dylan, do you happen to know, and this is kind of feeding off what Commissioner Ross said a while ago, do you happen to know what the flood zone for Vista Lake? said a while ago, do you happen to know what the flood zone for Vista Lake is?
I can't tell you for sure. That's off the page of our site plan, but it is most likely in AE4 as well.
AE4 as well.
Yes, sir, most likely.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Okay, anything else, Ben?
No, Mr. Chairman, I think that's it. The only thing I would ask, and I believe Mr. Alton's going to bring this up, is that we'd like for everything that's been presented in the record, our plans and stuff, to be considered as evidence and be a part of the record.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, that's the applicant's evidence. I'll go down the list now for others that would like to present evidence or speak to this issue. The first I have on the list is Lester Page. All of these folks have been sworn for the record.
Welcome this evening, Mr. Page.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of points I'd like to present to the committee. I'm going to regress two years on what you saw on television. There was a bad hurricane about two years ago in August, September, I don't remember what month it was.
I know.
Vista Lake was flooded out by the sound heavily. I know because my car was totaled. Now, the flood plain of Vista Lake and what is to be put in is probably the same, which tells me that since we were heavily impacted, it's going to be heavily impacted by surge on the sound side. If it is impacted, I know there'll be damage, but that's not our concern, that's up to the property owner. But there will be trailers there left year-round, although not used year-round, they'll be there year-round. And when they're called to move, they're going to be in West Virginia, Ohio, or where, whatever. And they won't get out of there. You're going to have pollution from the trailers and for all the damage coming from the sound over, going into Vista Lake and Vickers, Vickers Lane also. Now, number one, number one, there's going to be heavy damage. It's not, it's not the fault of the property owner because this is nature. Nothing, the permits might be sound, but nature doesn't go by permits. We need to have a, number one, a heavy, heavy bond on this thing because there's going to be major damage and major pollution. I think we need a heavy bond on this thing. And number two, there's going to be a massive cleanup. I don't know if you remember the television, what was on television at that time. There was pictures of Vista Lake. Vista Lake was the heaviest damaged place in Manio. All the trees came down. It was massive. It happened once, it will happen again. We need to, you can't fix the problem. You either have to keep the problem from happening, well, that is the only resolve you have. The only other possible thing is a massive bond, but that doesn't fix the problem. Thank you. I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Mr. Gallup, do you have any questions of Mr. Page?
I do not.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gallup.
Page, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah. Mr. Page, do you have any questions of the applicant?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Next is Barb Kopeck.
Ma'am, would you pronounce your last name? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Kopeck.
Kopeck?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Is that spelled with a K?
Yes.
Okay.
K-O-P-E-C.
Welcome this evening, ma'am.
Thank you, and thank you for hearing. My concern is our property values here. We have been in our home 20 years and we've had massive flooding now. If I sit here listening to how much someone loves the wetlands and respects them, why are we going to fill it up with a trailer park? Now, maybe minimal to you gentlemen, but the traffic in Manio on the main road is unbelievable at times. As far as polite drivers, I cannot make a right-hand argument. If we have all these trailers evacuating for an oncoming storm, what's that going to do to those of us that live there if we can't get out of our neighborhoods or streets to evacuate? I just don't know if our property value is going to go down with all this or what the answer is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kopeck. Do you, do you have any questions of the applicant?
No, just why? If you love the wetlands.
And Mr. Gallup, do you have any questions of the public comment by Ms. Kopeck?
No, Mr. Chairman, I don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Patricia Gale.
Welcome, Ms. Gale.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Woodward, Commissioners and members of the public. First, I would like to thank everyone who serves on this board and all Dare County boards. Your jobs are often thankless, as I learned when I was the youngest township clerk ever elected in New Jersey history. The political world is a difficult one to navigate and sometimes decisions are made for the good of few, which affect the needs of many. I also thank and praise the bravery of each and every person who came out tonight in the midst of a COVID-13 pandemic and a severe heat advisory to voice their concerns. Determining what the environmental impact of a project of this magnitude will have on the pristine wetlands, soundfront and adjacent Vista Lake is my main concern. My nine-year-old grandson and other children of Vista Lake developed a list of 50 species of wildlife that call Vista Lake home. Some of these include purple martins, mallard ducks, Canadian geese, blue crabs, eels, coyote, bass, catfish, river otters, blue haron, hercs, excuse me, hawks, and many other. These species exist in a very fragile ecosystem. The placement of 50 campsites that could bring from 100 to 300-plus visitors any week of the year, complete with additional solid waste, septic concerns, noise, trash, and other incidental pollution, will definitely have an effect on the ecosystem located less than 100 yards from the site. During the planning board review of this application, member Buddy Shelton stated, and I quote, "He understands property's owners being concerned, but this area impacts the least amount of people than almost anywhere else that you could pick to put a campground." This is a sad statement, Mr. Shelton, to say that you want to impact anyone or anything negatively. I wonder if your home was located on Vista Lake, if you would make the same statement. Any impact is too much, Mr. Shelton. I also questioned the proceedings that brought this application to your attention today. I was one of the residents who participated in the June 8 virtual planning board meeting where the conditional use permit was reviewed. After testifying, we could not offer any other information, and many of the public concerns were directed by planning board members to the Bechlin Farms owner, who also noted that his wife owns the Wan Cheese Refuge Campground. The comparison of these two campgrounds is not applicable as one is located away from any residential homes while Bechlin is being proposed to be less than a few yards from a residential area. This, however, was done continually in the meeting. Planning Board member Gore, amongst others, asked the applicant several questions to research. Here are a few. Mr. Gore, have you ever had any instances of bonfires or partying in the Wan Cheese Campground? Applicant: Not to my knowledge. Mr. Gore, have you had any instances where children have been harmed or potentially kidnapped? Applicant: Not to my knowledge. Mr. Gore, are you concerned about the property values of the seven homes that you own adjacent to the north side of the proposed campground? Applicant: Absolutely not. Why would he? He will benefit from the campground. Some of the board members seemed to be seeking further information, but their primary source was the person applying as their only expert. Perhaps searching primary sources such as Dare County Sheriff citations, Roanoke Island Fire Department calls, or even an analysis of county home value assessment fluctuations, amongst others, could have provided more accurate information. Instead, the board routinely took the applicant's word to dismiss many of the public concerns. The planning board director also similarly dismissed other concerns with only a few words or maybe a sentence. The review process seems to be held just as a matter of record rather than to truly consider what effect the project might have on the community. Also during the June 8 meeting, there was considerable discussion by the board regarding the safety of trailer park road width, and the board recommended a 20-foot road width for the RV trailer park ordinance. Guess what? The Bowser Town Road Bridge is only 16 feet. The applicant stated that he had a 27-foot boat trailer and has never had any problem navigating the area. However, I don't think an 11-foot wide RV and his boat onboard would be able to navigate this bridge at the same time. Who will pay to widen the bridge infrastructure to the minimum 20-foot width and the remaining road into Bechlin Farms land? The county? NCDOT? Bechlin Farms? At the June 8 board meeting, the Bechlin Farms owner stated that they are committed to many of the concerns that the respondents addressed, and I think he did the same tonight. If that is true, he should want to contact one of the many local, state, federal, or private agencies to complete a feasibility impact study, to study and assess the impact that his development will have on our wetlands and coastal wildlife. Impact in one area can affect many others by the coastal waterway movements. If the owner is not willing to do this voluntarily, the Dare County Board of Commissioners should mandate it proactively and review the results before voting on this issue. 15 years ago, this same applicant appeared before the Board of Commissioners with a request for a zoning variance to place a campground on adjacent land. At that time, the Dare County Board of Commissioners had the great foresight not to approve this project. My hope is that this board will have the same foresight and work to prevent any possible negative impacts on the county of Dare, its residents, its waterways, and its wildlife, both present and future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gale. Do you have any questions of the applicant?
The applicant? No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Gallup, do you have any questions of Ms. Page?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you all.
Next is Melissa Mann.
Welcome this evening, Ms. Mann.
Hello. I don't know how I can follow that one. But basically, my biggest concern is, I'm a mom of young children, and they spend a lot of time in the Vista Lake area, and they also spend a lot of time in Fanning Mill with a babysitter. And my biggest thing is that with the transient population going in and out, how are, like, the kids playing in the yard could easily be picked up and never be seen again? And that, to me, is a huge issue. Sorry. And then, like I said, that's my biggest thing. The other thing was the cabin that the applicant was talking about. To me, that was the one thing that seemed good if there had to be a campground, because I work with children with disabilities, and to me, that seemed like a wonderful thing if the campground had to be there. And it's just really disappointing that that was taken off the night of the proposal, and I just didn't understand why, but he did talk about that. Like I said, that's basically all I have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mann. Do you have any questions of the applicant?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Gallup, do you have any of Ms. Mann?
No, sir.
Next is Jesse Davis.
Mr. Davis, welcome this evening.
Good evening. I've lived in Vista Lake for almost 17 years. My property is adjacent to the existing farm, which hasn't been a big problem. I'm about 400 feet from the proposed campground. And the campground being a commercial endeavor, I tend to support things like that, but I do have a couple of concerns. I'd say many of them overlap and are very, with my neighbors and are very similar, although they brought up a lot of things that I never even thought about. So I will distill mine down to three points, which I have noted here. I could potentially support this proposal if I could be assured that the security and safety of my family, which is in close proximity to this proposed area, would be fine, that can be, I can be assured that that would not be affected. I would also probably support it if I could be, being a commercial endeavor, if I could be reassured that one person is not going to profit at the, that the financial loss of dozens of homeowners in proximity to the project. So in other words, you know, is one person going to make money while other people's property values go down? That's a concern that I have. And thirdly, I'm not an engineer. I have weathered several floodings and several hurricanes, many hurricanes in that neighborhood. And the flooding has been pretty significant to the tune of about four feet on my property at times, and then lesser, but just as devastating flooding. One thing caught my eye, and that was the proposed septic system. I mean, like I said, I'm not an engineer, but if you were to raise property adjacent to other property, that would indicate to me that the adjacent property that is now lower would receive some increase in flooding at the, you know, at the expense, well, in other words, you raise some, other places get flooded. And Isabel taught me a lot, and that's that inches make a huge difference in terms of how much flooding damage you can get. So that's a pretty big concern, too. And that's about it. And like I said, a lot of my views overlap with my neighbors, but those three points are the points I wanted to make.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Davis, for making those points. Do you have any additional questions of the applicant?
Can I ask the engineer a question?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
I would like to ask him if raising the property affects the adjacent property, affects the severity of the flooding to the adjacent property as a general rule, I suppose. And I can, and that's it, and I'll go.
Mr. Tillit, do you have a response to that, Mr. Davis's question?
Sure, Dave. Preliminary conversations with Dare County Health Department did specify that these wastewater systems would need fill. However, there is a drainage ditch located between this parcel and Vista Lake subdivision parcel. Any sort of runoff that came off of a mounted fill system would run and get collected in that drainage ditch prior to, and get delivered off-site to the downstream drainage prior to getting to the Vista Lake subdivision. And that drainage ditch, you can see on the site plan.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Davis. Do you have any questions of Mr. Davis? Mr. Gallup?
I don't, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Do you, Mr. Tillit?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Can I add one comment to this answer?
Yes, come on.
That would be that the drainage ditch, which
Step up to the mic, please.
I'm sorry. That would be, the drainage ditch does, that exists, would handle runoff, but in the event of flooding, the drainage ditch is, of course, underwater. So, you know, that, it's not really doing anything when it's completely inundated with water. That was, that's, the drainage ditch is in my backyard, is the only reason I say that. That's it.
Yes, sir. Do you, you want to address that, Mr. Tillit? You look like you had a comment you wanted to make.
I do not.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Gallup?
I don't have anything. Mr. Davis, thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Davis.
I may get this wrong, I can't read. It looks like, is it Nevin Westcott?
Welcome, Mr. Westcott.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. A lot of what I wanted to say has already been stated, but I'm here this evening to stand with my but I'm here this evening to stand with my neighbors and my friends, shoulder to shoulder, for this terrible wrong getting ready to happen behind our community. And I would agree with everybody. It's going to depreciate our homes and the value of our homes, because nobody's going to walk to buy a house and look out the back door and see an RV park. And I'm almost sure there's none of you in this room that won't sit on your back porch in your backyard and hear the discussions, the conversation, and the noise that's going to come from this RV park at some of these people's back door. And also, no matter how hard you try and how careful you are, there's going to be a slip-up in the hookup and disconnect of sewage systems to RVs. And I have witnessed it twice in our area at pump-out stations. And so I think that's something that needs to be addressed. The other thing, there's a-- I didn't do it. The other thing, there will always be smokers. There's going to be cookers. There's going to be grills. And somehow, some way, if one gets turned over and sets the marsh on fire behind our community, heaven help us. Because we had a fire in the marsh probably six, seven years ago. And you talk about a terrible feeling standing on your porch, southwest wind, and smelling the smoke. Thanks to the North Carolina Forest Street, it was prevented. And the other thing's been brought up. I work at the Vista Center, one of them. And the size of campers and RVs just keep growing. And some of them I have seen are as big as coaches that bring hundreds of people in here at a time. And I can tell you that they cannot pull in trailers or pull in vehicles behind them, come to the Bowser Town entrance, make a left-hand turn, and if somebody's parked trying to get out, there's no way they can make that turn. And you've got the same thing coming out. If somebody is parked trying to get into Bowser Town, you can't come out and make that turn if they are close to that line. Because I pull a 20-foot boat in and out of there as often as I can. And these RVs, as big as they are today, they're going to have to come out almost to the northbound lane. And in 2006, when I stood here, I have been a resident of Vista Lake for 32 years. They call me the mayor, but I don't want that job. But I stood here in 2006, and the planning board saw fit not to let it happen. Why now? I know it's moved around a little bit, not quite affecting as many houses. Why are we letting it happen now? And the other thing, if you're coming out of Bowser Town Road and you stop in front of the mosquito office, there's a camper, RV, 12-foot, a dually with slide-out mirrors trying to make that turn. I'm sitting there at the stop sign with a 20-foot boat. He can't make that turn on a 16-foot road. And two RVs, one going in and one coming out, or a boat leaving the boat ramp, he can't get out. There's not enough room for the two of them to pass. And the other thing I don't understand, we have very little vacant land left on Roanoke Island. A lot of it's marsh, and a lot of it's wetlands. Roanoke Island consists of 17.9 square miles. Why do we need two RV parks in 17.9 square miles? I hope you will look at this situation, because I can tell you now, the traffic in Manio, as most of you probably already know, is a tough thing. But looking at the size of these campers, they can't make these turns. They can't come out of there. And if they come out, there's no way that they can avoid the poles in front of the front porch cafe. And I hope you will look at these things and think about it. And there again, it's just not fair to our community. People work hard all their life to have their homes and have this stuck at the back door. They have a view of the new bridge. They have a view of the sound in the marsh. And now what are they going to get? Bushes and RVs. And I'd like to say one thing. I hope, looking around this room, I see my grandfather on the wall, Washington Baum. And I hope he would be proud that I've made an effort to stop such a thing from coming into our community. And as I said, please, in all your wisdom, don't let it happen to us. And protect us, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Westcott. We certainly appreciate your comments. Do you have any questions of the applicant?
No. The only thing I would say, I think the last time, in 2006, we stood up there, and they told us there weren't going to be any permanent residents in the campground. But they weren't true. There's permanent residents in there. They may unhook for two weeks and come back and start over again, which they can get by with. So having permanent residents in RVs year-round, I just don't think it would be fair to us. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Westcott. Mr. Gallup, any questions of Mr. Westcott?
I don't have any.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Martha Howe. And then next is Steve Howe.
Welcome, Mr. Howe.
Thank you. Please bear with me, I'm not a very good public speaker. I would like to put emphasis on everything that Mr. Westcott said. Some things really hit home in there that he was saying. I use that boat ramp that he's referring to in there frequently. And I just got a little 18-foot boat. But I know that I'm going to start having a big problem with all these campers coming in and out. And as it stands right now, I don't understand how it ever got this far. Because that road is substandard at best right now, coming in and out of there. And I sort of looked around, saw that Mr. Fearing had a lawyer, an engineer. Does it require all that just to get this far with it? I didn't smell right to me. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Howe. Do you have any questions of the applicant?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Gallup, do you have any questions of Mr. Howe?
No, sir.
Chairman, that was all I had signed up. There was no one in 168, but with your permission, I'd like to go check again to see if we have anybody in 168.
Yeah, while you're doing that, Mr. Westcott, would like, Mr. Westcott, come on back up.
In case you're wondering what the floodplain is in Vista Lake, here it is. 2011, Irene, I did not leave. I stayed home. And I don't know if that was a good thing or not. But I can tell you, that's where it was in front of my house when I walked off the porch. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Westcott.
Chairman's going to check in 168.
All right, we'll wait just a few minutes I believe it's Gail, is that right, Ms. Gail?
Yes, it's Gail.
I'm pretty good.
Something is going through my mind. If people are in a trailer park and they're living there except for two weeks out of a year, are we not losing tax revenue for these people? That's 100, you know, well, we'll say 50 sites. Just a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gail.
No one in 168 wants to speak. Chairman, that would be the close of the evidence. And so now, Mr. Gallup, we have an opportunity to sum up, and then it'll be for you to deliberate.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very briefly, we appreciate your time this afternoon, this evening, and your thorough consideration of the public and our client and Ms. Creve's testimony. That being said, I do feel the need, just for the record, in case this ever goes any farther, that I need to make a couple of objections due to some of the public testimony, in particular, the public testimony that was irrelevant and not based on whether or not the application meets the standards that are in your current ordinance, as well as the requirement under the current general statutes that things like traffic, valuation of land, and other things that require engineering knowledge are not competent testimony of lay witnesses, which I believe all of the witnesses that were before you from the public who mentioned those matters, I don't think any of them actually provide you any numbers or substantial testimony on that in any event. But I need to object to that, just for the record. Otherwise, primarily just based on the application itself and the plans that are in front of you, we've presented substantial competent evidence that the standards and the ordinance have been met. And we'd ask that you approve the conditional use permit with the conditions that have been proposed. And if you have any questions of me, I haven't been sworn, so I'm not going to give you any factual evidence, but I'll be glad to try and answer whatever I can.
Thank you, Mr. Gallup. I'm sure our board has some questions. I know Mr. Ross does, but I've got one real quick. One of the concerns I heard from the public this evening was the size of RVs coming in now and the road. Am I reading this condition? One of the conditions that the planning board required was Item 6, that a 20-foot-wide gravel road shall be constructed to access the travel trailer sites as depicted on the site plan that's in Appendix B. And the road will be constructed of a minimum of eight inches depth of gravel consistent with NCDOT sub-bay standards? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is a condition that I recall from the conditional use permit that's proposed. The applicant is okay with that condition, but that condition is limited to within the property. And, you know, on the site plan.
Not ingress and egress?
No. Nobody had any conditions about modifying the roadway coming into the property. It was all, that's the condition of a gravel road within--
Within the property.
Yes, sir.
Should we read through the conditions?
Pardon?
Should we read through the conditions?
Yeah, we're going to do that. The county manager is going to run through all of those 16 conditions. But I want to give the board an opportunity to ask the applicant's attorney or the applicant or his engineer, any specific questions. Mr. Ross?
Yeah, it's on the same theme, Mr. Chairman. On, I hadn't been aware of, nor did I even think about Bowser Town Road. It's been asserted frequently here tonight that Bowser Town Road, as it exists, is inadequate to satisfy the needs of the 50-unit travel trailer park that's presented before us. I don't know what authority, jurisdiction we have over Bowser Town Road, if any at all, and the requirements they're in, that it should be, I guess I was hearing a number of the people indirectly asserting that someone needs to widen Bowser Town Road, or conversely, limit the size of travel trailers that will be admitted for use. Now, I know very little about the size of travel trailers, so I'm not going to represent that I do know much about them. But I'm wondering if anyone is here that can provide competent or authoritative testimony about the width of Bowser Town Road and the subsequent use by travel trailers? That was the one new item to me. Thank you.
And my thoughts on that is, I don't think anyone here is going to be able to provide you with a survey and tell you the exact widths. It's most likely a DOT road at some point, maybe a town of Manio road at some other point, depending on how it goes. But the key here is, again, the authority for you to hear testimony about traffic concerns, you've got to hear it from a traffic engineer. And there's not a traffic engineer here tonight. Not that somebody couldn't have been brought, not that somebody couldn't have done it. But I understand Mr. Howe's perspective on having an attorney and having an engineer. It's not anything that doesn't pass the smell test. It's how you make sure that you meet the requirements and do what's required by the rules and the ordinances that are passed. And then the question about limiting RVs, I think Mr. Fearing, I would probably speak for him. I hadn't asked him. But my bet is that that'll be self-limiting. If you can't get an RV there, you're not going to pay to go there, and you're not going to go there. And I also remember some discussion at the planning board where one of the planning board members had driven large trucks down that road to the Bowser Town dump for a fair amount of his career, and said that it was plenty for the garage, you know, the trash trucks and other trucks that went to that dump, and then the water trucks, you know, coming down, at least to that intersection. So that discussion was there. The planning board considered it and didn't add any conditions outside of the property being developed.
Thank you, Ms. Gail.
That's kind of my only question. I know we can't put in a conditional use saying you got to widen Bowser Town Road. It's just a question, and I would guess I could ask Malcolm. I don't know, maybe you know more, Malcolm, about the size of the trailers that might use Bowser Town to access. And I'll make up a number. Trailers over 27 feet shouldn't apply because they're too large. Again, I'm just making that up. I don't know if that's accurate or factual. Do you have any thoughts on that?
One of the thoughts that I have on that, if you notice the sites, they're different shapes--
Yes.
--within the campground. Okay, that's going to be a limiting factor. And internally, we're going to control the leasing of those sites. Okay? So in our campground, including this campground, there's a couple from Canada, and they're getting much bigger than a Volkswagen bus. It's a toe behind. So they go from there to a Prevost is the largest one that I'm aware of that they make. That's like a Trailways bus. It's a big one. But I would say this, and this is by no means expert testimony, but the vehicles that were used for the Bowser Town landfill were tractor-trailers. And they were used for decades there. And it seemed to be adequate to the county who operated the landfill for decades. If that becomes an issue of turning in and out, I would be the first advocate to do something, not on the Bowser Town road, because I don't believe that is an issue. It's a large DOT. It's a DOT road. And the road going, turning to the left going south is a state-maintained road. So in the state's requirements, my guess is that it was sufficient enough to handle any and all boat traffic they perceived going in there. Did that answer it?
Well, I'll be real specific. Hypothetically, nothing more than 30 feet can be used to book a reservation at the travel trailer park. Again, I'm making that number up, Malcolm. I don't know that that's a good or bad number.
I'd have concern with that.
I'm sorry?
I'd have a concern placing a limit on the size, because I don't know what that size is.
Well, that's kind of what I'm fishing for, because I'm hearing, oh, my gosh, it's too big. But we don't know how it is too big. So I'm wondering--
I know Prevost, there are types that you pull, and there's types that you drive.
Right, right.
And I can't tell you what the length of the largest one is.
48 feet. 48 feet.
48 feet is about that.
Yes.
I didn't know that.
Malcolm?
That's top of the line.
Do school buses go down there?
Yes. School buses serve, the road where the houses are, the seven houses, is a private road. Okay? Not only school buses go down there, but they also pick up refuge there. County trash trucks use that road twice a week. And the school buses, when school's in session, just-- in session, when there's a family with children there, they go there, and there's a turnaround there for them. So.
Thanks, Mal.
Any other questions? I've got a couple more, Mr. Gallup, but just wanted to see.
I have an observation, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gallup.
I am bounded on the west by 125-site camper park. I'm bounded on the north by a 50-foot, or excuse me, a 50-site campground. I'm bounded on the northwest by another 50-site campground. I don't have any problems with them. There's, some of the alarmist pedophiles and things like that, these people pump a lot of money. When the Cape Hatter Saglers Club comes in, various recreational things that we do on the Outer Banks, a lot of these guys are filled by that niche, by the travel RV. That's just my observation. I consider what I have to say relevant to this, because for 18 years, I've had 200 of them within a baseball toss on my residence.
Thank you, Mr. Gallup. Mr. Gallup, and I'll ask Mr. Tillit as well. One of the concerns I heard from Mr. Westcott, in particular, was hookups for RVs. Now, we're in the 21st century here. Now, I know in days gone by, that might have been a problem, but what kind of issues would a pull-along trailer or a motorized motorhome, motor coach, what kind of issues would we have with respects to hookups for sewage that would be a major spill? That one's puzzling me.
I believe Mr. Fearing may also be able to speak to the occurrence, you know, how often it occurs, but I think Mr. Tillit can probably tell you about, you know, what the connection's like on the ground.
Okay. I mean, from what I've heard, these are pretty, pretty safe procedures these days.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'm not aware of any sort of issues that would be involved with the hookups. I can tell you that these, this wastewater system for this project would be reviewed and approved thoroughly through Dare County Health Department, and if they saw any issues with anything, they would obviously be the one, the first one to voice their opinions, and everything would be permitted through them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tillit.
Yes, sir.
Hang tight, hang tight. One of the other issues that the applicant is more than willing to do, and it's a conditional, it's one of the conditions, is a six-foot privacy fence along the property. He also offered this evening additional vegetation. Why would that not dissipate some potential noise issues coming from the campground? And I'll ask you that question, but I'll yield to Commissioner Couch. If you've lived next to something like that for 17 years, have you ever had a problem with noise?
The three campsites in my vicinity are run by owners with an armed fist, and I have no reason to doubt that this wouldn't be the same here. I don't think the Fearing family's gonna put up with a whole lot of mess.
And so stated earlier by the applicant, that he wants to be a good neighbor. So I would, I would have the tendency, knowing the caliber of person that Mr. Fearing is, that I would have to agree he wouldn't tolerate that type of situation in his campground. But I'll ask you, I'll come back to you with respects to the noise issue, if you see a potential there, with, based on the fact that the applicant's willing to build a six-foot privacy as well as additional vegetation.
Based on that fact that they're willing to go through those procedures of building the fence and planting the vegetation, I would not anticipate any other need for noise returns.
Okay, thank you. My next question will be of the planning director. Donna, with a project of this nature, is there, is there a need for an environmental impact statement on a project such as this?
Mr. Chairman, the ordinances that we're dealing with do not give us the authority to require an environmental impact statement. We have a stormwater management permit that will be issued by the state. We'll have the Corps of Engineers permit that Mr. Tillit testified will be reviewed by several state and federal agencies, and it will be issued if it meets the federal standards. It's on a NC DOT road, and the wastewater systems will be approved by the Dare County Environmental Health Department based on state law. So those are addressing the main environmental impact statements. Yes, there's wildlife out there, but again, there's nothing in the ordinance that gives me the authority to require the applicant to go above and beyond what are the typical permits that we require for all of our commercial development.
Okay, thank you, Donna. You answered that question. Got one more?
I have a question for Gallup, too.
Can I finish?
Yeah.
You may. I'm on my sequence here, but I don't want to. In 2006, do we have any history of the planning board entertaining a CUP at that time?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, and I referenced that in my comments, and that, there was a request by Mr. Fearing in 2006. It was a request to rezone and change the zoning of a residential property. Actually, it was a text amendment to add campgrounds and travel trailer parks to the text of the R2 zoning district. A legislative decision that is under North Carolina law can be voted on yes or no. It is distinctly different than what you have in front of us tonight. I have stood here and testified that, in my experience as the planning director of the campground and a travel trailer park, is consistent with the industrial zoning that applies to the property.
All the reasons why I'm asking all these questions.
Yes, sir, I know that. I know that.
I want to make real sure.
And I had covered that in my, in my previous remarks, but
Right.
there is a distinct difference
Right.
legislative versus quasi-judicial.
I want to make real sure that I fully understand
Yes, sir.
each and every item about this situation, out of respect for the applicant as well as the residents. So that's why I'm asking so many questions and being so detailed.
That's fine.
And because I've got to make a decision.
Yes, sir, you do.
And.
And Donna, didn't you say that was for a different property? That was not for this same property?
It was not this industrial property, and again, we're going on my recollection, but it was the property that Mr. Fearing operates as the farm now, as his, as his beachland farms. He has a farm permit from the state of North Carolina that he operates as a farm. When that rezoning request was denied by Dare County, he went in an opposite direction and just turned it into a farm, and has been successful with it.
And, gentlemen, I apologize. I still got a couple more questions. Donna, can you share with me some in-depth, some more conversation that the planning board had with respects to the cabin? I believe, I believe the applicant has also stated tonight that, hopefully down the road, this may be an option for him. I know that Ms. Mann, it was a concern of hers, that she, not a negative concern, but a positive, if this had to go forward, she'd like to see that, especially with what the applicant said he wanted to do with that cabin. There were two different functions that he wanted to make available. And help me understand why that is not a part of this.
The original site plan that Mr. Fearing submitted did include a cabin.
Right.
And as we reviewed that, based on my comments during the staff-level review, that the cabin was not allowed in the current standards of the Dare County Travel Trailer Park ordinance. And I advised him of that, and he withdrew that portion of the, of the site plan because it was not consistent. He has an option of building that on a separate piece of property there, or it just so happens that the planning board is in the process of amending the travel trailer park ordinance. And one of the issues that we're discussing are these cabins. Now, whether that recommendation from the planning board to change the travel trailer park ordinance will mesh with what Mr. Fearing is planning to do out there remains to be seen. But in order for him to move forward with the site plan for the travel trailer park ordinance, the cabin was not consistent with that, and so he removed that portion of it, and so what you see in front of you tonight is just the travel trailer park ordinance with just the RV sites.
Okay. I know, I've listened to every comment, and I'm going through, and I wrote down every single note that everybody said, and I know I've probably overlooked a couple of things. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna check my notes to see if I missed anything. And I will yield to Mr. Commissioner Tobin, because I know he has a few questions, but I may have a few follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I only really have one, really clarification. The I-1 zoning
Yes, sir.
allows for this campground to be put there. And the only thing that we're considering is what conditions that we can put on the campground as requirements for him to do it.
As part of the conditional use process, reasonable and appropriate conditions can be applied to the use.
Thank you.
I did have one additional.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Ross.
Also brought up, and I meant to ask this earlier, I apologize. The comment was made, there's a storm coming, and it's a high-risk, high danger storm, and all of these travel trailers are travel-ready. I remember saying that was part of the conditional use for this property. And one of the witnesses testified, yeah, but they'll be in West Virginia or Pennsylvania or Ohio, wherever, and they'll just leave the trailers. As that testimony was made, it occurred to me, hmm, I wonder if that's accurate, if there's a way that they can be moved easily or quickly, given the state of emergency or a storm coming? And I was just curious about that.
I can testify to the, what highway-ready means now, the operation of the campground and how Mr. Fearing interacts with his tenants is a question that he'll have to answer. But I would imagine that when there's a storm coming, he has mechanisms in place at his other campground to where he calls these folks and say, you know, are you watching this? And I would also imagine that the people that have those RVs have an investment in that, and they're just not gonna leave it there
Probably don't want to see them float away, yeah.
let it be tossed around.
And we're really only talking about the tow behind. I mean, if it's a self-mobile trailer, presumably people are in this trailer because they needed it to get there and leave, so they would be present and able to drive it. So I guess it would only apply to a tow behind, I'm using the jargon, I'm not even sure if that's the correct term.
Pumperful.
Travel trailer, right, right.
And they somehow leave and leave the trailer, which again, seems a bit of a puzzler to me.
And again,
For exactly what you said.
I'll let Mr. Fearing address that, but highway-ready use means that, A, they have to keep the wheels on it, they have to have tags on it, and they can't put any attachments on it. The 100-square-foot entrance landing isn't attached to the RV.
Right.
It's just kind of butted up to it.
Right.
So that if you have that RV or that travel trailer, and you have a lease to where you can leave the travel trailer there, you don't live in it, but you leave the unit there, all you have to do is back your truck up to it and pull the RV off, and so it's in a highway-ready use. That comes from the federal floodplain regulations, and it's verbatim the way that it's in our ordinance.
Right.
And if Mr. Fearing wants to come up and answer how he interacts with his tenants, then that certainly.
Yeah, it just left me puzzled why people would abandon valuable trailers in the advent of a storm coming, and why they would be in West Virginia when their trailer is here.
Rob, I can add a little something to that.
Yes, sir.
Managing a marina is managing transient vessels, and we've had trouble in the past during hurricane evacuations trying to get the vessels to move. And what we've done is we've instituted a plan that it costs them a lot more to stay than it does for them to move. We have a fine system. So there's ways, there's ways to get them to move.
Mr. Chairman? I guess you just sent a message to the applicant.
Mr. Chairman?
I, and Mr. Ross, Commissioner Ross, I've had a little bit of experience with travel trailers, pulling, as well as boat. Typically, when you park something there like that, you disconnect.
Yes.
Crank it down. It's on its wheels. There are usually stands in the back of those that you release and drop to the ground to take a little bit of pressure off the tires. But I venture to say, if you were there, within less than 10 minutes, you could have that trailer out of there, hooked up and go on. Once you undo the electrical and the sewage, and hook it to your trailer, you can be going in five and 10 minutes. At least you should be able to do that, especially if you're, if you're pulling a tow behind, and you've done that in the past. So I would assume that's certainly what the applicant's referring to when he says highway-ready, and you have to be ready to rock and roll and get out of there. So just a little bit of experience from that end. Anyone else? Vice Chairman, did you have another question?
I'm asking just maybe.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, Commissioner Bateman, did you have anything?
I think I'm good right now.
Okay. Commissioner Couch?
Donna, relative to the I-1 zoning, is a text amendment something that could accommodate, if this was a cabin that had those kind of humanitarian benefits to it, is that something that would accommodate a request, a text amendment on I-1?
I think that the cabin is already allowed as a residential use in and of itself. The fact that it's in conjunction with the travel trailer park ordinance in and of itself isn't consistent with the I-1. It was consistent, it was inconsistent with the travel trailer park ordinance. So the fact that he was proposing the cabin as part of the overall campground use was what was inconsistent with it, with the travel trailer park ordinance. It wasn't that it was inconsistent with the industrial zoning, it was that it was inconsistent with the technical standards of the travel trailer park ordinance that really says, you have travel trailers, you don't have cabins.
Understand. Thank you.
Right. Okay, we have some conditions that I'd like for us to go over again of the applicant, and then ask the applicant if, I'm sorry, Commissioner Couch, did you have anything?
I just got a couple of things. Ms. Mann actually referenced child safety, and Mr. Davis also referenced security. And according to the conditional use, I want to make sure we have this, this down on the record. As I know we're gonna read them, but I just want to kind of reiterate that statement. There would be a six-foot fence around, around that area of the property, around Vista Lake, and also a vegetative buffer, correct?
The travel trailer park ordinance requires a vegetative buffer around the perimeter of the park. And then in addition to that, one of the conditions is that along the sites, I think it's nine through 12, that a butt the rear of those lots in Vista Lake, that that's where the six-foot fence will be.
Okay.
The other property in the front of the park there is owned by Mr. Fearing.
Okay. Also, another thing, I know we're gonna have, one thing that was brought up by Mr. Westcott was barbecues tipping over and open campfires being a fire danger. And in the conditional use permit, it does say that campfires would be used. I would ask, are these actually done to fire code standard of the fire pits that would be placed on the campsite?
I would have to ask Mr. Fearing to address that. I think when the planning board put the condition in there, that there were no open campfires, that it was just that, that it was just no fire pit or anything, that it was just an open campfire
There is a, there is a fire code for campsites for, for open pits.
Okay, well then, we can certainly add language in there that says that, but if it says it's, they're already prohibited, that's not gonna be an issue.
It says they're allowed.
The CUP does not.
Shall be prohibited in the park, number 15.
Oh, prohibited, okay.
These open campfires shall be prohibited in the park.
Oh, okay, yeah, I read it wrong. I'm sorry. Yeah, I read it wrong. I'm sorry.
That's fine. That's fine.
Yeah, I swear to God.
It's easy to do.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner House.
Oh, I just wanted to make one more statement too.
Okay.
On Bowser Town Road and the traffic going in and out of Bowser Town Road, I spent many years in EMS, a lot of them at EMS station on Bowser Town Road. And back when the, the sanitation dump was back there and trucks went up and down Bowser, Bowser Town and made all the turns left and right and had no problems at all, I just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Commissioner House. I went back through my notes and I think I've had all my questions answered this evening. But what I want to do now, before I ask the county manager to go over the 16 conditions, I want to give the public one more opportunity to ask the applicant any question and vice versa. I want the applicant to be able to ask any of the public comment folks any question that they may have to have. So of you seven folks, Mr. Page, Ms., and I apologize, is it Kopeck, Kopeck? Kopeck? Ms. Gail, Ms. Mann, Davis, Wescott, and Howe, any of you folks have any additional questions you'd like to ask of the applicant? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Gail, come forward, please.
I think there's some confusion about length versus width. The bridge, have you ever measured the bridge, Mr. Fearing, at Bowser Town on the canal? Have you ever measured it with a measuring tape? Oh, I did yesterday, okay? From this point to this point on the bridge, it's 16 feet, okay? And that's right on the edge of the grass. The road is supposed to be 20 feet in the park. I don't understand why it isn't 20 feet on the way to the park. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gail. I guess we would certainly have to go back to NC DOT and ask them that, but I, I don't have the answer to that. I don't know if Mr. Gallup might or not, or Mr. Fearing, but, Mr. Gallup.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any better answer to that than you. It's a DOT, it's somebody else's road and, and, you know, I think boats and trailers, I've been back there, just like many of the folks who testified, and you wait for the next guy and it's got plenty, nobody's 16 feet wide. Everybody's, you know, enough to either get by each other or wait.
Right. I think it goes back to early days, I guess. I know when I was a commissioner in Kill Devil Hills, we had a road in KDH, west and north side. And we wanted to pave it because it had, was in bad shape. And we asked the residents if we could widen it because it, it wasn't even 16 feet, I don't even think it was 12 feet. And they said absolutely not. So we never did, we never ended up paving that road because they didn't want us to take any of that land. So I think a lot of that, Ms. Gail, goes back to a long time ago when they built roads down here. Unfortunately, they weren't of the 21st century length and, of width rather. So unfortunately, I can't answer that. But I think we go back many years and you'll see a lot of roads like that. I know that doesn't help your question or answer your concerns, but it's certainly something perhaps we could inquire about with NC DOT. I'm not, I'm not opposed to us sending them a letter and asking them about that. Mr. Gallup, you got any questions of the, those who spoke? Okay. Thank you all. Oh, Mr. Howe, come on up here, sir.
Would the commissioners entertain the idea of each one going out there as if one body or individually either way and looking at it firsthand?
I've been out there. I've been out there.
Been there too.
About answering the question. I've been out there. Yeah, I, that's one thing all of us certainly like to do when we have something like this. We go out there.
Right. Well, I know everybody's pretty busy this day.
Yes, sir.
I didn't know. I wouldn't fault you if you couldn't.
Oh, no, no, sir, but thank you. That's a very valid question you have of us. Well, with that being said, Mr. County Manager, would you address the board with the 16 conditions that we're, that we're asking the applicant to agree to?
All right, the conditions are as follows. One, the trailer, the travel trailer park shall operate as prescribed in the definition set forth in chapter 155, article five of the Dare County zoning ordinance. And that's the trailer, travel trailer ordinance that Donna had referred to earlier. Number two, each site shall consist of a minimum area of 1,500 square feet with a minimum width of not less than 30 feet. Each site shall consist of a 10 by 35-foot gravel parking area for the individual travel trailer and additional gravel parking improvements for motor vehicles within the campsite. Number three, travel trailers remain in the park on a year-round basis. However, such units shall not be used as permanent dwellings or for long-term occupancy. Use of travel trailers for permanent dwellings shall be considered a violation of the permit and a violation of the Dare County Travel Trailer Park Ordinance. The park owner shall be notified in writing of any violations and advised corrective measures to correct the violations. Any travel tra, number four, any travel trailer that remains in the park on a year-round basis shall be fully licensed and ready for highway use according to the standards of the Travel Trailer Park Ordinance. Highway use is defined as remaining on its wheels or jacking system and is attached to the site only by quick connect type utilities and has no permanently attached additions. The park owner shall be notified in writing of any violation and advised corrective measures. Number five, no additions, decks, porches, or any other pertinences other than 100 square foot entrance landing shall be allowed for each travel trailer. It shall be the responsibility of the park owner to ensure that all travel trailer owners are aware of this restriction. The park owner shall be notified in writing of any violation and advised corrective measures. Number six, a 20-foot-wide gravel road shall be constructed to access the travel trailer sites as depicted on the site plan, appendix B. The gravel road shall be constructed to a minimum of eight inches depth of gravel consistent with NC DOT sub-bass standards for subdivision roads. Number seven, the campground shall be served by central water from the Dare County Water System and will utilize onsite wastewater systems approved by the Dare County Health Department. Number eight, a bathhouse facility will be constructed on the site as required by the Dare County Travel Park Ordinance. The number of fixtures provided shall be established as in the Travel Park Ordinance. Number nine, the trailer travel park shall be, have a vegetated buffer strip constructed around the perimeter of the park as set forth in the Travel Trailer Park Ordinance. A solid fence consisting of wood or composite materials shall be installed along the southeastern boundary of the park adjacent to campsites nine through 12 as depicted on appendix B. The fence shall be six feet in height and shall be maintained by the park owner. All supplemental state and federal permits shall be secured prior to the installation of any of the improvements for the travel trailer park. Copies of these permits shall be provided to the Dare County Planning Department. A copy of the tenant's lease shall be provided to the Dare County Planning Department. All proposed infrastructure improvements shall be installed within 12 months of the date of the permit. A final site plan depicting the location of all site improvements shall be submitted to the planning board to ensure compliance with the approved site plan before park operations can commence. Any signage for the campground shall be subject to a separate review and approval process according to the Dare County Site Ordinance. Park owner shall be responsible for the removal of any damaged trailers or recreation vehicles that may result from storm conditions or other natural disasters. Damaged units shall not be placed or abandoned on the right-of-way of any public or private road. Park owner shall be responsible for any debris removal or cleanup costs that may result from storm conditions or other natural disasters that occur. Violations of this section of ordinance shall be considered a violation of chapter 96 of the littering or of the Dare County Code of Ordinance and subject to terms of that chapter. Open campfires shall be prohibited in the park. All other terms and provisions of the Dare County zoning ordinances shall remain in full force and effect except as herein specifically permitted otherwise.
Thank you, County Manager. I'd like to ask the applicant, Mr. Fearing, to come forward. Mr. Fearing, you've heard the conditions of, of your application that's been placed on, on you and, and I'm asking you if you are in full agreement with these conditions. Yes, I am. Thank you so much.
Malcolm, I got a question for you. On number 14, I like what Jim said about what he does at his boat. Is that something you could possibly work out?
Yes, sir, I can. I, I think that's a, that is a good suggestion, not only at this campground, but the other one too.
And, and the reason I'm saying that, you know, sometimes someone comes down, they have their camper there and then they go back to, say, Virginia, they hear the storms coming, they might not be coming down and getting that camper unless it's gonna cost them some money. And then I can see them doing that if it wouldn't put too much of hardship on.
Not only I'll do that, but I'll give that information to Ms. Creve so y'all can have a record of that. Okay. Great. Thank you, thank you, Malcolm. All right, I'll ask the board if there's any other questions of the applicant that's before you this evening under item four of the agenda. Hearing none, then I will, what is the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve the site plan and draft a conditional use permit as recommended by the planning board.
There is a motion to approve by the vice chairman. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
There's a motion by Commissioner Tobin to that motion. The floor is open for additional comments? Any further comments?
I do have a comment. And, you know, this, situations like this we're in, there's always, nobody wants to stay in their own backyard. And the reason I'm saying this, and I heard Nevin, I heard you, and, and I, and I understand, and Steve and everybody who spoke. We had a situation years ago in the town of Kitty Hawk. As a matter of fact, the town manager was the attorney. I was on the planning board, they were trying to put an asphalt plant right by my house. Probably been in my, in my family over 100 years. It was a conditional use. It, it had a right to go there. And so I couldn't stop it. But what I could do was to make sure that it was the best asphalt plant that could ever go there. Not that anybody wants an asphalt plant. Dylan, you know what I'm talking about? You live in Kitty Hawk too. You know, it was right there. And it made everybody mad, oh, you're killing the wildlife and all this stuff. But what we did there, folks, we made it the best one it could be. We put buffers up there, we made them do noise ordinance. We have a meter where they had noises and they would check the noises all hours of the day and everything. It was a difficult decision and we had to vote for that plant to go there because it was gonna go there. And there's no way we could have stopped it. And that's the decision we have on this board here. We cannot stop this from going there. But what we can do is make it the best it can be. And I think we've got an applicant that is, is willing and, and able to do the best things in his part to make it what it is. So I don't like, I don't like the decision I have to make, but we have no choice other than making it the best it can be.
Ervin, let me ask you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bateman, what was the community climate six months after the asphalt plant went in?
I run by it every day and I don't even notice it anymore. And it's been a while. But it was, it was difficult to swallow for a while there because you, you know, you would hear it in the morning, you would hear the conveyor belt. And then they, they went, they changed some things and that, it made it better. And then now that nobody even notices it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bateman. And I, I'd like to make a couple additional comments too. This is a permitted use and, and as the, as the commissioner said, you know, we can't stop it. But what, what we certainly can do is try to put some things into place that will limit or do the best we can to, to make it as comfortable as possible for the neighboring community. I think we have, at least I feel like I've asked the questions that I needed to ask to feel comfortable about making my decision with respects to this. I have nothing but the utmost respect for the Fearing family in that I know them well enough to know that they're not gonna tolerate a whole lot of mess going on, that they'll run a, a very nice area on Roanoke Island. I'll say the same thing as you had. I had a very similar situation where I live in Kill Devil Hills on Bay Drive. Our good friends, the North Carolina Power, chose that they didn't want to go down the bypass with these big, huge power transmission poles. So for the last 20 years, Mr. Tillman, I've had one of them in my front yard. And they can do some humming when the salt gets on the lines. But I've been there long enough now, when the salt gets on the lines until it rains, they'll hum. And I don't even think about it now, but it is a site in my front yard. Big, huge round pole that's, God knows, 70, 80 feet in the air with huge transmission lines. And I've been there 20 years, I don't even think about it now. But that's not, not anything comforting to you folks that have some concerns about being the neighbor to this. But I do feel confident that the applicant is an honorable person and will, has shown this evening, just with Commissioner Tobin's suggestion, that they will, they will do everything humanly possible to make this a very, be a very good neighbor to you folks. So anyone else have anything else to say?
Mr. Chairman, let me say one thing.
Yes, sir.
I have been by the campground there in Wanches hundreds of times. I have never been by it and look in there and see it unkempt or unkept. It has always been clean. It's as clean as anything you're gonna find in Wanches. It's probably cleaner than most. I think the Fearing's running a, a good operation down there and I would expect nothing less. Mr. Fearing has stated here tonight that he wants to be a good neighbor and I think you can count on that in spades. He will be a good neighbor. He will maintain a clean, very clean park. And I think as, as time goes by, I think you will see him to be, as the chairman stated, he will, he will be honorable in those terms. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Chairman. Anyone else? With that being said, there's a motion on the floor to approve as presented by Vice Chairman Oben, it's been seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sent? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, folks. Thank you, Mr. Gallup, Mr. Tillman, Mr. Fearing, you folks. Take a five minute. We'll take a five minute break. I'll call the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order and County Manager, turn it over to you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That leads us to item five on the agenda. And Amy Alcacer is here from COA to give us an update on the Almoral Foundation report for the Dare Guarantee Program.
Welcome this evening, Amy. So sorry you've had to sit, sit back in for such a while here. I apologize.
I quite enjoyed it, actually. I learned quite a bit. I found that's a.
Don't ever run for office.
Mr. Chairman, I think Amy is considering a career change to planning and zoning ordinance management.
Yes, yes. Well, I come before you all tonight. Thank you so very much for having me. Back in September, I had the opportunity to meet in this very room with you all and really make a milestone in history for our region at large. We were able to sign an MOU which put the Dare Guarantee into place. As of January 2020, that program was launched publicly. Within that, I was able to share with you a report of what that first cohort of students looked like. As you know, anything that is new takes a little bit to get out into the public eye. Also too, within our area, we wanted to make sure that we tested it on a smaller cohort of students starting in the spring as opposed to the amount of students that we get in the fall semester. So with that said, on June 30th, I provided Mr. Elton a report on behalf of what we were at at that point for the academic year from January up until June 30th. And then we have now started into our next fiscal year. So in that report, I was able to let you all to be aware of the applicants. We had 28 for the spring at that time, five for the summer, and the fall, we had 56. Those are how many applicants actually applied for the Dare Guarantee. And then as far as awarded at that time on June the 30th, we had. And then as far as awarded at that time on June the 30th, we had 15 that actually were awarded monies as well as two for the summer, and at that time, fall was at 12. Since then, we now have 64 applicants for the fall, and of those 28 have already been accepted. Please keep in mind that this is in fact a secondary scholarship, so all of the monies that come in play ahead of time with your financial aid, as well as any other additional scholarships that come into play are awarded out first, and these monies are awarded out on the backend as that scholarship to kick back to make sure everybody has that opportunity, again, for those students that fall within that criteria of the 16 months of graduation, that they're eligible to come back. So with that said, I also shared with you all the dispersments of funds to date at that point. That was around six, well, it was at $6,888.78. Of that tuition and fees was $4,946.37, and books and computers are at $1,942.41. The reason I wanted to break that down for you is simply because we did the $1,000 for books, we also did the one-time $700 for computers. So I think it's good to see who takes advantage of that and who doesn't necessarily need a computer or who doesn't necessarily need books for all the different classes that we have. So I think it's important for you all to see the breakdown of that so you know where those monies are going. Another item that we were able to do is hire a Dare liaison person. This is an individual that works in between the school system as well as within College of the Albemarle. The idea beginning that was pretty phenomenal because it allowed us the opportunity to get our foot in the door of the schools as well. So it's not that we're just marketing the college, but we're marketing to the counselors, and we have a foot in the door with those students that, counselors have a lot on them these days. They have a lot of students they have to work with. So we see this as an advantage because, again, it allows us that opportunity to have that one-on-one relationship be in the schools with them, and that individual, I've been able to share quite a few mediums that we've been able to publicize. One in particular is currently with the state of COVID-19. Unfortunately, there's a lot of students that are still weary about making their decisions on moving forward to a four-year college and are moving out of the area. So this individual has been able to make those personal connections along the way, stay engaged with those students, and several of them are making the decision to stay back and actually attend COA as opposed to going away to school because they see the benefit in not paying all these outrageous costs of tuition when in fact they're not going to have that campus experience that they typically pay monies for. So some additional marketing efforts that we've been able to run, we've done videos, radio commercials, we've also done YouTube ads, we've done directed emails at each campus as well, or I'm sorry, I say campus, at each high school in Dare County. We also have social media platforms, and we ordered some of our Dare Guarantee shirts, and actually, when the student is accepted, this liaison actually goes to their house, delivers that acceptance letter as well as the Dare Guarantee t-shirt, takes a photo of them and is able to promote it on social media. All of these avenues are great ways to really build this program. So we're very excited, we're so excited that we get to be a part of something that's going to impact the region as a whole, because our hope is that other counties will see how important and the benefits of this and how they can transition that into their area as well and really grow a tuition-free, you know, college setting for those community colleges that need more sport. And I also wanted to talk with y'all today because, you know, the monies that were allotted to us to be able to, you know, introduce this program to the community. As you can see, we were only able to give you the figures for spring because, again, it's the backend. We have to wait till the semester finishes out before we can report out on the numbers because we don't know that cost until it ends. It's a kind of unique situation, again, the financial aid kicks in and then the class itself and supplies and so on for kit fees and everything of that nature. So I'll be able to support, I'll be able to report back on our fall semester, after the fall semester's actually over. So you'll get to see a more extensive report the next time I come back to you all to report on this for the whole fiscal year, but this here is just that one segment of us just doing it since January until that one spring semester only. One thing, though, I'd like your consideration is, is as I mentioned, the amount of money that was gifted to be able to pull this program off, we feel that we may at this time be able to extend the criteria outside of just the 16 months for those students so that we can impact, get more students to apply, get more students in. As you all are aware, COVID-19, there has been several individuals that do not have jobs at this time due to the different social distancing measures that have been put into place at different businesses. We feel this is an opportunity for us to potentially get some more of those adult students in our doors as well as get the FTE count up within the college. So just something for you all to consider as I report out on these numbers, we do see a growth already just within this next semester, again, we're not even in full year of this. So to be able to have this growth already and show and track that to you, we feel that it will only grow from there. However, if we were to extend that criteria beyond that 16 month, and when I mean that, it just, the student who is a graduate, who has graduated within 16 months are eligible. If we were to extend that a little longer, we would be able to get additional students into the program and also, again, turn those around into FTE, which ultimately gives us that multi-campus funding that we so need in the, each and every school so that we can have a good cohort of students come through. Another thing that I wanted to bring forth to you all as well, because we are good stewards of your money as well, we want to make sure that we're using it wisely. So there is one thing that we have encountered as far as the drops go. So for instance, if a student enrolls and, say, they get into welding, and three weeks into the class, they drop, we cannot refund that student, of course, and we can't refund back the Dare Guarantee. That student held the spot in the class, we still have to pay that tuition, and that money comes out. So I wanted to bring forth that concern to you all because I feel that maybe we need to also put in somewhere within our criteria that maybe only one drop can occur, or maybe only two drop can, you know, I don't want anyone to be able to take advantage of this. As you all may be aware, there is three changes of programs that are allowed within our MOU, so they can change their program three times, but we never addressed really how many times they could actually drop and be reconsidered for another tuition payout. So again, those are the things that I wanted to bring your attention to today, and also just to make sure I answer any questions that you all may have for me as well.
Thank you so much, Amy, appreciate that update. I have a couple of questions, and I know this is first year, so you have some growing pains. Do we anticipate for the fall any more of those 64 applicants being approved over and above the 28 that already are?
Yes, sir, we do. In fact, several of them at this time, six are awaiting, we're waiting just for them to sign a letter and send it back in to us. 11 are waiting just for the FASPA to be processed, and seven of them have not filled out and completed their FASPA. So with that said, John Hunting, who was our liaison, he is on the phone with them daily, shooting emails to them, he had a phone call at 10 o'clock last night with a student. So I talked with him today, and he is steadily adapting to their schedule to make sure he's meeting those needs based on wherever they're hung up in, in the enrollment process to get to that number.
And I know you mentioned earlier, in the spring, you had 28 apps, five in the summer, 56 in the fall, and there were 15 awarded in the spring, two in the summer, 12 in the fall. That's 29 of 89. Is there any way to elaborate on? That's a pretty big difference.
28 to 56, the difference between those two numbers?
Yeah, the 20, the 20, 29 awarded out of the 89 apps.
Understood, so.
I mean, that percentage is certainly not what I'd like to see, I'd like to see that percentage much higher.
Yes, sir. So I will say with the spring semester, again, it was so new.
Gotcha.
The students had to get familiar with it, parents had to get familiar with it. So for us, at that time, when we, when we pulled out all the advertisement and everything on the program, I felt had we had a little bit more time to really do that, and also, too, with the COVID and everything of that nature that fell into play after, I feel like those numbers would have been increased. But at this time, I will say, I do feel very comfortable with the 64 that we're getting to show the growth, and that is simply because of those outreach efforts that are being done. I mean, we have literally emailed every student, that is not an opportunity that most colleges have the pleasure of being able to have that relationship with.
Right.
But we were able to target them and their parents, we've hosted Zoom meeting sessions with them as well so that way any questions they may have for us. Some students we've had to work with as far as, for instance, military families. So if their home resident may be, we'll just say California, however, they have lived in Dare County for the last six years, students like that, we have situational, we have to decide, okay, where do they fall within this? Do they meet the criteria, do they not meet the criteria? So there have been some students that unfortunately have not met the criteria, but again, we have to stick to what's in the MOU to make sure that we're carrying it out.
Right, I understand. Is that something we need to look at?
No, for those particular students, when it comes to military, if they reside, is what we, you know, was the best understanding, not necessarily that they don't have another residence somewhere, but they reside at that residence, they live there, they receive bills there, and they can show proof of that so that we can back it on our end.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner Ross?
Just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly. We are emailing, calling, and Zooming them to give them money, not collect money. Do I have that right?
Kids.
I did hit that right, did I?
Yes, yes, so.
We're giving them the money.
We have basically, I'll just say there's a different generation coming. More often than not, we cannot talk to their parents one-on-one, we have to talk to the students. That's what part of transitioning from a high school to a college is, is you're becoming an adult. So we do have some instances where parents have called in and we're like, okay, we really need to speak with the student, you know, this is their opportunity to really hone in on, you know. So each situation's a little different, but yes, we are doing several marketing outreach efforts. I think anything that's new, though, you've got to try everything to see what really works. But I will say, the one-on-one calls, even during this entire COVID pandemic, there was a way we could turn it around and make it, you know, ideal for the Dare Guarantee as opposed to losing students, we gained students from that opportunity, so.
And in addition to the other point you made, you'd like the 16 months extended somewhat.
Yes, sir.
I just had two, kind of two-part question. How did we select 16 months, and what would be an appropriate new number or length of time that would help achieve what you're after?
So as this was a new program altogether, we were able to look at what Brunswick Community College was able to do in their county so that we could successfully adapt to something that had already been created. And when reviewing that MOU, that is what we were able to base that off of, and we felt that the criteria itself gave us enough to be able to, you know, we didn't want to put all the money out there and then within six months not have any left and be able to plug this whole Dare Guarantee, you can go to school for free, but we've ran out of money.
Right.
So that small target audience was allowed, you know, that test run to see how it could play out.
Sure.
And now we're at a time now where we can come back and comfortably tell you that if we were to extend that beyond, say.
24 months?
Yes, yes, at the pleasure of the board, honestly, at the pleasure of the board. So that we could then, you know, be able to get more students in, and we've already got those students where we will target them because we already know we have a list of students that we're keeping as they call in as well.
Commissioner, Vice Chairman Overman.
Amy, you mentioned some concern about the drops earlier.
Yes, sir.
Do you all have some ideas about how you want to address that, or is it kind of too early in the game?
Well, part of me is, I mean, I know they're students, they're young adults, so not everybody has, I mean, even at age 30, I don't know if I had my life figured out at that point, and you want to change majors, that's one thing, but when they're getting free money to go to school, but then they just don't show up to class, at what point do we hold them accountable, you know? We have to really make them, you know, to a sense, grow up a little bit. So not the one chance, two chance, three chance, you're out, but at some point, we have to have some type of measure. I would, I mean, to me personally, I feel two chances are fantastic because that lets them know, hey, you already got dropped once, that money was applied and you didn't, you know, you didn't use it, but ultimately, I think maybe two of those drops would be ideal. If you go beyond that, I mean, we'll certainly entertain anything the board is willing to put out there, but.
Are they dropping a course or, you know, like a class, or what are they?
For different reasons, so.
Can I explain what they're dropping?
Yes, sir, so, so some individuals, say, for instance, they lost their job during COVID, and now they can't go to class, and say it's a welding class, I'm going to use the example of, again, they have to have that hands-on, and they just give up, you know? So some other students have it to where, I'm trying to think of a good example also.
So the class was already paid for out of, out of this, out of the money here?
Yes, sir. We're not seeing a lot of it happen, but it is something that we have seen on more than two occasions that we need to make sure we bring forth to your attention as well.
So what you're saying is that individual would then come back and sign up for something else?
Yes, sir, that individual.
So they're not dropping an adding, they're just dropping?
They're just dropping for that semester.
Yeah.
And then they're technically still eligible within the 16 timeframe to be able to come back. And if they don't change the program is the key, though, because if they come back and they change their program, say it wasn't their program of choice, that's understandable because that's a program they didn't feel that their heart was in, they changed it and they wanted a different career path, and we have up to three of those changes that they can do. But if it's just an individual, say they're not that motivated to go to class and they, I'm just, it's free anyways, I'm just going to drop it, it's more valuable than that, and they're not seeing that value, and I feel that they need some type of measure in place so that way, if they are dropped once, say they get a warning letter, you've been dropped, if you decide to apply again for the Dare Guarantee, you're only allowed one more drop as this, you know, so something a little bit more in, for us to be able to hold them accountable for that.
They gave me, we just monitor this, keep an eye on it, see how it goes, and if it gets out of hand, then certainly we need to make some, some calls. As far as extending, if that's a recommendation, I mean, I think this board certainly would be willing to entertain extending that to 24 months, but I know we'd have to change the MOU, but that, that would be fairly simple to do, but I think the board would certainly entertain that. Any other questions?
Great job.
Thank you so much, Amy, appreciate it, be safe out there.
Appreciate, thank you all.
County Manager?
Yes, sir, that brings us to item six on the agenda, we're going to do this by blue jeans, so it'll be on your screens. We have Sarah Odeo and Marcia Parrot from DFI, the UNC School of Chapel Hill Government Essential Housing Needs Pre-Development and Opportunity Site Identification. This is going to be their project update, and with that, I'll turn it over to Matt to get the blue jeans up on the screen and then turn it over to Sarah and Marcia.
Okay, great, so can you see the slides with me, or are you just?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you flying with it? Great, perfect, that helped. I know you've had a long night, so I am going to keep this as brief as possible. We'll go over what DFI is doing, you know, we've had the pleasure of meeting with Commissioners Overman and Ross previously, and, you know, we would have loved to be there in front of all of you today. Unfortunately, circumstances. So the plan today is, we'll really dig into the housing needs assessment, our key findings around that, and then update you all on where we are with the site identification. This is an update today. So we're the Development Finance Initiative, we are a program of UNC Chapel Hill School of Government, and what we do is we provide real estate development and finance expertise. We've worked with communities all across the state on real estate development issues that range from, you know, or types from multifamily office, and my expertise, which is affordable housing. So our engagement was to attract private investment for the development of affordable or essential housing, as you all call it, and what this means is we will do pre-development work like a developer would do it, but we're going to do it on your behalf, and we're going to identify sites that are suitable for housing development, and we will actually come back to you next time you see us, we'll be with a short list of sites. So not today, but next time, with a short list of sites, and you all will pick two sites. And on those two sites, we will figure out a program that can work there and actually go out and find developers to execute these projects for you all and be there at the table with you all while you negotiate development agreements. So we are there from the idea point through to shovel in the ground. Where we are in the process is we did start our work in February. Unfortunately, like everything else in the world, everything kind of came to kind of a screeching halt. screeching halt. And we were asked by the manager to pause our work in March, I believe, right, when everything happened. And so we kind of took a pause. We'd already done a lot of the market analysis, analysis at that point, and started some public engagement. But unfortunately, you know, we had to kind of take a minute, but we kind of did a little cheating, did some additional work. And so now we're here just to give you an update because it's been a while, right? And we want to make sure that you see us, get to know us, and that you come along for the ride, that you understand the terms and the challenges and the opportunities that we see in our work. From here, we're going to continue the opportunity site ID, and we're actually going to do some high-level site and financial analysis on each of the properties. So that when you see a site, you get an idea of, okay, what could actually fit here? And you get an idea of, okay, how can this get paid for? Which I think is key. Skipping all how much is the cost is, okay, forget how much it costs, can it get paid for it? And so that's our goal here. The next time you see us will be for that, and then we'll continue our work into next year. The first part of our work was really understanding what the dynamics are from the point of view of a developer in Dare County. So what does a developer see when they come into Dare and are considering building residential units or multifamily development in Dare County? You all know these. I know this. I'm not going to tell you anything new here, right? But the real big takeaway here is that the challenges really come down to cost and infrastructure, right? So limited land as a result of a couple of different things, but even the land that is available is costly, and the cost to actually build is expensive. And that's why you haven't really seen the development of the kind of housing that you're looking for in recent years. We do need to add COVID, right? We all know this, but there are a lot of big question marks around what that means for paying for financing development and what it means for what can be done in the upcoming years. And so we're just watching out for that like anybody else. But you have a lot of opportunities, though, in your community as well. Public sector leadership is huge. So just the fact that you all are thinking about this is huge because it is a major signal to the development community that we are welcome here. And you cannot underestimate how important that is for developers. I have a freezing issue, okay. You also have businesses that have been the most vocal advocates for the development of essential housing, right? They're saying, hey, we need this. And so there are business partnership opportunities there that we need to kind of be aware of, capitalize on, and may be a great opportunity. You don't have to go at it alone, right? There are opportunities for municipal partnerships across the county. And we do see a synergy of interest. Although the priorities, we understand, are more of this year-round housing, we do see a synergy of interest around the seasonal employees and potential students that could do, could enable something that otherwise would be nearly impossible to do. And you all are very well-located in the sense that you get a boost in the, there's a program that I'm going to dig into, and you're going to see me talk about it a lot, but I don't have that much time to really explain all of it. And so all I'll just say is that it is that biggest subsidy available for the development of housing. And you all get a boost for this big subsidy program. And that's a great thing, and a great thing for, from the point of view of a developer. So what did we learn in terms of looking at your needs? I'm going to, I want to clarify some terminology upfront, just because I think there are so many interpretations of it up and down. If you hear me talk about affordability, what that means is that basically a household should not be spending more than 30% of their income on their housing costs, okay? For a renter, that's going to mean their rent and the utilities combined. For owners, that's the mortgage, the insurance, property taxes, and utilities. So if something is not affordable, it simply means that a person would have to spend more than 30% of their income to live there. And when we talk about income, we talk about relative, talk about it relative to the area median, right? And this is something that's set on a federal level by the Housing and Urban Development Department, right? And we look at it, the actual area median income is on a four-person household level, although most of your households are around two people, right? That's your average size. But your area median income is closing in on $70,000, right? That is high, but not as high as, say, Wake County or the Chapel Hill Durham area. So this is a great graphic that the North Carolina Housing Coalition put together, and I recommend you tap into their resources if this is something that you all are very interested in. But who are these people? What are the salaries? What are the jobs, right, that we're talking about here when we talk about providing housing for, I'll say, lower-income households, right? And it's as simple as, in Dare County, you need to earn about $39,000 a year to be able to afford the median two-bedroom apartment. And if you look here, you can see that your typical worker in the retail fields, in your food prep and service, even in healthcare and childcare, fall well below this limit on income. So what does that mean, right, in terms of rents, okay? I know I've had some great conversations with Commissioner Ross where it's all about, let's think about the rent, what does that mean? And so tying it back, when I say a household is low-income, I mean that they're actually earning less than 80% of the median, right? What that means is that the total rental cost that they can afford, that's both their rent and utilities, is no more than $1,100 a month. So that is quite high. But even then, you are lacking supply in your area to meet this demand. And for your low-income households, at 60%, that goes down to 800 and below. Your workers, right, that are earning median, that are earning minimum wage, the $7.25 an hour, they can't really afford to pay more than $420 a month. And you have less than 200 units that are anywhere close to being affordable at that rate, right? What we see in terms of supply in Dare County is consistent with what we see in almost all tourism areas, right? This does not surprise us that you have such a huge volume of vacant units, right? Because these vacant units are primarily seasonal. This should read year-round renter occupied units and year-round owner occupied units. About 41% of all of your units, and this was taken in 2018 census, so my feeling is that this is actually bigger now, but about 41% of your vacant seasonal units are seasonal. What we've seen is that this is a real uptick from 2010, right? So in the last 10 years, you all have lost about 240 year-round occupied units. And for renters, that's about 50 units that have been lost to kind of the year-round rental market. And you've added about 2,500 vacant, likely seasonal units. And so we see conversions and most new construction being focused on the out-of-counter tourism market. The tourism market, though, it creates another issue in terms of supply. That is, again, typical. But as you can see in the dark purple, right, these are the number of renter households that you have that are one and two people, right? So that's about 2,800 one- and two-person households. You only have about 550 studios and one bedrooms. No surprise, your three-bedroom stock in the light purple, two- and three-bedroom, is massive, right? Even though you don't actually have as many households with three or more people in your community. What does this mean in terms of affording a unit, a place to live? Is that if you're a one-person household or a two-person household, to make the jump from being able to afford a one-bedroom to a three-bedroom requires an additional $20,000 a year in income. So that's the premise, right? If you don't have these one-bedrooms, you're going to have to rent something bigger. And the cost implications are pretty big. And we see, you know, looking at seasonality, digging into seasonality specifically, you all know this, you add a whole bunch of jobs in the summer. From winter to summer, you are packed and you have lots of new employees. And those wages, we looked at them, are primarily focused around 600 and 700 a month, right? Is what these households can afford to pay in rent. And that's typical for a very low-income household, which are the jobs that are coming in in the summer. But you only really have 900 rental units that are affordable anywhere between 500 and 750. And so, and this is, these are units of any size, right? So you do obviously have people living together. But even then, when you look at the three-bedroom units, obviously, you know, you have someone who's going to make a lot more money selling or renting on a weekly basis than they do renting for a month, their three or four-bedroom unit. And so people just get crammed in and are living in circumstances that are not ideal. We do want to do an employer survey and are pausing until the season's kind of chilled out a little bit so that we can get a really much stronger grasp on this. So we're going to focus them in less on the season.
Huh?
Yes, oh, please, please do. I just, yeah, please.
Sarah, Sarah, I think, can we interrupt? I know Commissioner Ross might have a question or two.
Hi, Sarah, this is your favorite commissioner.
Please ask. Hello.
The slide previously with the dark purple and lighter purple lines, that's it. The middle graph is a puzzler to me. Can I ask for a little bit more on how we have 3,250 units available, but only 1,300 households seeking them, which would imply we've got 2,000 empty units? I can't believe that's right. So I'm misunderstanding something.
Those are your vacant, those are your seasonal units, right? It's that mismatch, right? So you've got these three bedrooms, right? But they're, yeah, but they're being billed as three bedrooms as opposed to one bedrooms and studios.
Are these standalone houses renting seasonally? Or are these multi-unit developments like apartment complexes?
So these are all of your units, right? Both your multifamily and your standalone. So we try to understand all of the units and the situation to get a sense of, sorry, these are your renter occupied, let me be clear, these are your renter occupied units, right? What this means is that people are only building these bigger units. You don't have much of a supply of multifamily. Considering kind of the density that you have of one and two bedrooms, you don't actually, a need for one and two bedrooms, you don't actually have that many. And so your renters, like single households, are overwhelmingly living in three-bedroom houses. And that can be fine, right, for some people, but not if the costs are high, or not if you're lower-income. So you don't have that much multifamily.
We're still struggling to understand this. I'm looking around to see if I'm the only one, but I'm getting, looks like maybe you're not alone, Rob.
No, I'm not. I'm lost.
Yeah, the 3,251, are those individual two-to-three-bedroom beach houses selling, or sorry, renting by the week to vacationers?
No, these are renter occupied units. So these are year-round occupied units.
But it implies that 2,000 of them are sitting empty.
No, it implies that those 2,800 one- and two-person households are living in two- and three-bedroom houses.
These, up on line one.
So if you're, so if you're a one- or two-bedroom household, which is the majority, right, I think your average household size is 2.3, which is much smaller than North Carolina. If you are a one- or two-person household and you're one of 2,800, you're all competing, right? If you want to live in a studio or one bedroom, there are only 550 of them. So you end up living in a bigger unit.
Okay, so if I add the 2798 and 1304, I get 4,100 households. And 548 and 3251 gives me about 38 available units, 3,800. They're mismatched.
Don't forget to add the four-bed plus.
Yeah, we'll get to them. I'm trying to stay in the big numbers for a minute. It implies that we have a mismatching of supply with demand.
Exactly.
But the total available units are not that radically off. And here, I was misinterpreting, think, no.
Well, no, I mean, if somebody lives there, they have, right, if somebody is living there, they have to have somebody, somewhere to live right now. Although, we can get into the homeless issue at another point. But most, everybody here is living somewhere. The reality here is that people, because of a lack of options, are likely having to live in bigger units and therefore paying more than they would normally pay, right? Even for a market-rate unit. So they could probably afford a one-bedroom unit, but they don't have a choice but to rent a three-bedroom. And of course, that three-bedroom is more expensive. And so that's the dynamic that we think we're seeing. And I'm going to dig into cost burden, which is people that are paying more their income, and we can get a better sense of that there.
Okay, continue, thank you.
I've seen that.
Yeah, that kind of clarified a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, we can move ahead. Thank you.
No problem. So this actually really answers what you're saying, I think, or what you're asking. So what you're looking at here are renters by income level, right? So LI, so extremely low income up to your median, right? Extremely low, VLI, very low income, LI, low income, right? And in the yellow, these are households that are spending more than 30% of their income on housing costs. So nearly 60% of all of your low-income renter households are spending more than 30% of their income on housing costs. And so in red, these are households that are severely cost-burdened. So they're not just cost-burdened, right? They're not just spending more than they can or should. They are spending 50% of their income on their housing costs. Now, when your income is $25,000, $30,000 a year, and you're spending half of that, you have to think about how they're able to manage all of the other expenses. And so on the lower income of the spectrum, you see a lot more households that are severely cost-burdened, so spending way more than they can afford. And if given a choice, the likelihood is that these households are not choosing the situation, they just don't have another option, right? There isn't supply available that is affordable to them. And we see it play out in that an estimated 8.6% of low-income renters faced eviction filings in Dare County in 2019. So that's a big chunk, that's a lot of households. And it means that they are struggling to pay rent. There could be other reasons for evictions, but that is the overwhelming reason why most file. So who are these households? Who has to spend more than they can afford? You can see here that large families are a small percentage, a really small part of this all, of households with five or more people. It's your single households, your elderly single households, and your small families, right? That's two to four people in a household that are cost-burdened, or worse, severely cost-burdened in your area. So I hope this does bring clarity to kind of the supply mismatch, right? Which is, people are living in the three bedrooms, they just can't afford them, and they're struggling. And something else that reinforces this need is that when we look at the units that are available that are restricted affordable, right? Where you have to qualify, your income has to qualify you to live there, these these units have virtually no vacancy. I didn't even have to write the vacancy here, cuz they have virtually no vacancies. And not only that, you know, Bay Tree Apartments has years on the waiting list. And we saw this, you know, we spoke to them, and we saw this in what we read, but almost everybody I spoke to was like, it's impossible to get into Bay Tree. I mean, it's just somewhere people wanna live, and it's for elderly income restricted. So it's actually lower, very low income households. And you do have two tax credit developments, right? I talked earlier about that big subsidy, the highest subsidy that you can get. And that is the Pirates Moore, which you have in Manio and Kill Devil Hills. I'm switching them up, so, sorry. Harbertown is in Kill, in Mantio, Pirates Moore is in Kill Devil Hills. And they're all, they're aging, right, at this point. Your most recent development was a teachers, through the State Employees Credit Union, was through the Teachers Housing. They have a four to six month waiting list. And they actually recently had to make the decision that people could only live there for up to four years because they wanted to stay, because it was really the only option.
That's correct.
Yep, yep.
And so, I mean, just key high-level findings is that, what we see here, this is consistent with a tourism-based community, right? We don't see rising costs necessarily, right? We looked at rents and we looked at home values over time, and we didn't necessarily see kind of a steep rise that made us think, oh, it's, you know, costing people out. But we see your supply dwindling. So people are making a choice between monthly, yearly, weekly. And you also already have an undersupply of smaller units that are contributing to a lack of affordability across the market. Our conclusion really is that, as of two years ago, you needed 1,200 units to meet demand for the current low-income residents. This does not account for what we heard through all of the stakeholders and what we've heard antecutely, and I'll get into that. But this doesn't account for non-resident employee demand. We are just talking about people that live in your community now that are struggling. And what this means by income bracket is that you have a need, right, for households earning more than 80% area median income, right? In many ways, you kind of just need multifamily rental development. You need it, you need more small units. But you also need units that are restricted to lower-income households. And so thinking about the low incomes, the very low-income households, and also extremely low-income households. Something interesting that I think is worth noting is that a Section 8 voucher is priced at the fair market rent. And fair market rent is affordable at around this level, right? So if you're an extremely low-income household, you can use a voucher, right, in a development that has units that are $750 in rent, right? You don't have to pay that, but you can use a voucher that does pay that to the landlord. The problem is that since 2012, they went from being able to house about 130 people with the voucher in Dare. They're down to 50, because those 50 households just can't find anywhere to live that will A, accept the voucher, but B, has rents at those levels.
Sarah.
So, yes.
These, Section 8 vouchers, are they relevant? Are they applicable to seasonal workers?
They are not, no.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we're thinking about year-round extremely low-income households, yes.
Yeah, well, I understand that it's, the year-round, it is a segment of essential housing, but it's a two- and three-fold problem there. We're trying to accommodate a couple of three entities here. The seasonal workers, the year-round people, and then, of course, you know, transient people as well. I do find that significant and interesting about the undersupply of smaller units, and we're gonna have to address that going forward in whatever we do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome. There's stuff that we can't get with data, right? There's just this anecdotal evidence that we hear that both low and moderate wage industries are losing employees due to a lack of housing. I mean, I heard this from you all, I've heard this from everybody. And so businesses are unable to support or expand operations. We can't count the number, or we haven't been able to count yet, the number of employees that have maybe even offered a job and weren't, wasn't able to take it because of a lack of housing. So we have created an employer survey, as I said earlier, and I think we'll be releasing that when the season calms down a little bit. And then, you know, people have to live somewhere, right? If you are a housekeeper, right, at a hotel, you have to live somewhere. So where are they living? Probably about 45 minutes away, which we saw in the data, right? People living very far away, about 45 minutes away. And what does that mean in terms of the economic pressure? That commute, the time that they lose where they can be working, and the time and the money for travel, for vehicle, for gas, all of it, it adds up. We also know that you have, you know, the Coastal Studies Institute, which is planning to expand, and would, in order to expand, they need somewhere for students. And I'm gonna repeat it, because it's worth repeating, COVID-19 can only make the situation worse, right? People have lost their jobs. Maybe they lost their job for a month or two. But if you think about the level of savings that people are able to have, that one month or two has probably had major impact on their long-term ability to afford housing, right? Whether it's because now they're paying off debt that they didn't carry before. But all of these things are adding up and have added up. Or hours have been cut, right? Because the restaurants can't operate in the way that they were operating before. And so, the need for housing that is affordable to lower-income households, it's only gonna get bigger under COVID. So I'm gonna pause there on the housing needs. Do you have any more questions around that?
I think we're good.
I think we're good to go, Sarah.
Okay, great. So this next part is really just, I'm gonna give you kind of a really quick tutorial on how tax credits work, and then show you where we are in the process. Do not expect to see sites, I know everyone's excited to see them, but we're not there yet. We wanna kind of bring you along in what we're considering, and use your minds, right? If you look at the presentation and you say, ooh, I know a great site located in this competitive area, all of that helps us do our job to the best of our ability. So the biggest subsidy program that I've talked about to date is the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program. So you might hear me call it LI-Tech or tax credits, right? But these are tax credits that are available for private or nonprofit partners, right? So this is not for government entities to use. This is a private rental housing production. And it accounts for the construction of over 3.2 million units nationwide today. So that is the biggest chunk of any housing development that is getting done in this country is coming from this program. It provides cash upfront for the development of houses. So there are two different types of credits. One is a huge subsidy, it covers 90% plus of your development costs, but it is very competitive. I mean, of course it is, right? It's a lot of money, so a lot of people want that money. You have another one that is a lower subsidy and is automatic, but it's a much lower subsidy. But you could theoretically, you know, pick a site in an area that's close enough to a grocery store and a pharmacy and still, and still be able to get these credits. For that 9%, you have to have a perfect site with all of the other pieces falling in place as well.
What about DDA?
This program and that DDA gives you that boost, right? It allows you to maintain affordable, the difficult development area.
You guys know what DDA is?
DDA.
Sarah, explain DDA, please, some of us didn't get that part.
It is a difficult development area under the tax credit program, right? Only for the tax credit program. And what it means is that your costs to build are so high that the state recognizes and the federal government recognizes they're so high that they will give you extra credits to build in Dare County.
Like 30% extra credit?
Yes.
So if we were theoretically perfect on the 9% program, and they added the DDA, which we are, which was listed to one of our opportunities, a developer would be looking at 11.7% tax credit on the cost of development, good for 10 years, that can then be fungible and sold?
They get it upfront 10 years, exactly.
You guys know how much money that is? It's a lot.
It's a lot.
But, I'll tell you, I'll say this now, and it'll come later in the tax credit kind of training. They can't ask for all of the money, right? Because they have to compete by asking for the least amount of credit. So I don't wanna get into that now, but just know that that's one way that they compete. But it is still more than 90%, 90%, and that's without counting the mortgage that they could probably service based on the rent in your area. This is a program that's overseen at the state level, where the state sets the rules and the state awards the credits, although this is an IRS program. And in order to do this work, though, we need to emphasize that you can't just be any developer. It has to be a developer and a management company that has experience with the tax credit program.
See that bullet point? There's the catch. You knew there was a catch, that's it. Sarah, I'm looking at the photos, hang on, the photo, go back to that one, please. Yeah, the upper right-hand corner photo. I'll drive on occasion to Chesapeake or Virginia Beach or Norfolk, Suffolk.
Right on the interstate.
I cannot tell you how many developments I see that look exactly like the upper right-hand corner. And I become very wistful in my thinking, gosh, I'd love to see a half a dozen of those in Dare County with hundreds of units where people can live in a quality, clean, safe rental environment.
Affordable.
And affordable. And yet here we sit. Frustration builds. But I have Sarah and Marcia, who are gonna come to the rescue.
We're trying.
I mean, why can those units not be built? I don't know.
Why?
Yeah.
Cost.
That's right, cost.
Yeah, so.
How do you see a Chesapeake or private?
But.
Land, land, private projects in Chesapeake are less than that.
Oh yeah, it's farmland, I mean, it's.
We've got free land on Bowser Town, five acres, we won't even charge for it. Can't get anybody to do it. Anyway, continue on, Sarah.
Yeah. So for the LI-Tech subsidy, for the greatest subsidy, right, for that 9%, the one we really, really want, right? And even for the 4%, you have to reach 45 points. You need 60 points, right? 60 points. And the bulk of that, you get from being close to a grocery store, shopping, and a pharmacy, right? And it's established by the size of your place. So luckily, you have a lot of municipalities that qualify as small towns. But if you happen to have a property that's in Dare County, that's more of a bigger town, it counts as, so that's a one-mile radius. So that's where you get the tricks going. But they look at things, because it's competitive, they need to set rules, right? They need to find a way to kind of rank properties, rank developments. And they do it through the site in part. So where is this property located? What is the character of the neighborhood? That's a big chunk of points. The proximity, and a big one that is gonna break all of your hearts. I am, I'm gonna tell you this now, it's gonna break your heart when you look at Bowser Town Road, is it cannot be near incompatible uses. An incompatible use includes a wastewater treatment plant. So, here we go.
Is incompatible with a?
It's incompatible.
What's the definition of close proximity?
Quarter mile?
Oh, it means within, yeah, within half a mile. So you can see in the blue that these are your primary amenity area. So that blue, all of that, right? If it was just based on amenities, and I would argue neighborhood character, right? If it was just based on that, you could get a big chunk of points. That wastewater treatment plant, so we're looking at Manio here, just to be clear, if it's not, if you can't see it very well from your end, right? And in star, we're just using Bowser Town Road as an example. Right next to wastewater treatment plant is Bowser Town Road, right, that site. Here's the radius where it cannot be located, where you cannot have the tax credit development. And what you have left in yellow are the areas with sites that are tax credit, potentially tax credit competitive, right? We still have to look what's next door to each property, kind of right next door. But just looking at it within these kind of high-level, big point buckets. The yellow is where we're gonna have to look for sites in Mantio.
Sarah, are there exemptions? Is that a hard and fast rule? Is there anything in the criteria that, under duress, would give Bowser Town site an exemption, or?
I will say that I got a pretty hard, I won't say that I got the word no, but I got the word, have you, I heard, have you ever seen a project near a wastewater treatment plant get funded? And I said, no, have you? And they said, we have never funded a project next to a wastewater treatment plant, and we don't give exemptions. So that's what I got. And we did go back and forth and tried to get as much information as I can. I mean, we talked about this with the hope that maybe, you know, but it was, if you're trying to compete for a 9%, it doesn't mean that you can't use it for 4%, right? Bowser Town Road is still an option for the other tax credit. You still have, I think you get 57 points, you have 57 points out of 60 points. That's good, you can't win. Every project that gets funded is basically 60 points plus tiebreakers and bonus points. But you could still use the 4% tax credit, it's not off the table, and there are other kinds of developments that could happen there. What we're talking about here is, hey, how do we access this big subsidy that is available? So this is Manio in yellow. You have about 4,000 acres of competitive land that may have other limitations, right? We don't know yet.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have any control over two of the three.
Yeah.
I mean, we're dead in the water on KDH and southern shores. We have no control. All we have is A.
You have the ability to partner, there are partnership potential, right? And so, we don't wanna take it off the table, because the need that we've described is county-wide, right? It's not exclusive to people in unincorporated Dare County. And so, we're hopeful that there's an opportunity even in one of these areas. So what's next is that we are using an alternate criteria, right, as well. So we want to find a site, we are going to find a site, we are optimistic that we will find a site that can compete for that 9% tax credit. That doesn't mean that you don't have other needs, right? And so, we're looking at criteria for non-LI-Tech housing needs, non-tax credit needs. I'm sorry?
I'm having a sidebar, Sarah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. And so in this case, we're thinking, we still want that access to amenities, right? But we don't need a hard and fast rule, we don't have to say it has to be too mild. But you don't wanna be in the middle of nowhere, right? Because that adds all of the, you know, connectivity issues. We wanna be able to get density. If we're talking about multifamily, we wanna be able to get density on that site. A path to site control. So maybe there's this great site that would be great for development, but the owner is not gonna sell today or tomorrow and has big plans for it. So we need to be kind of cautious in kind of how excited we get about a property until we know there's a path to site control. And also, are there sites where there are partnership opportunities? I've already been lucky enough to have a couple of conversations where it's clear that there may be. where it's clear that there may be other organizations that have the same interests that you all have. And there may be opportunities along that line for land, potentially. So for us, again, today was an update, kind of bringing you along for the ride. Our next steps are going to be to come back to you with a short list of properties. But I'm not just going to show you a pretty picture, right? We are going to have done a high-level site analysis, give you an idea of what's possible, and the financial analysis. So, hey, this site isn't competing for tax credit, how could you pay for something here? And we're going to continue our stakeholder engagement. We want to keep talking to people in the community, keep talking to potential partners, and continue to nurture that as we move forward. So, any questions?
Sarah, I have a, the Dare County Board of Education, speaking of partnerships, it might be worth the inquiry if they would be willing to partner. I don't know the size of the parcels that were, I want to say gifted or else the Board of Ed picked up for a really good price five, six, seven years ago. But I think it would be worth a reach out to see if it fits. If it doesn't, then we know. These are in Manio proper, down close to where we go back to the Dare County Regional Airport and down into where our Public Works Department is. Essentially, a couple of miles from Bowser Town. It's worth a look, worth an ask. You can probably get them on the Dare County GIS and identify those properties. Airport, not Airport Road, I'm drawing a blank. But I can shoot you that. What is that road that heads down to, to the Public Works? Driftwood, thank you. Just a thought.
Great. We've already been, so we've, one of the other things we've done is mapped to all public ownership to understand all of that. And, but if there's one that you have in mind that you think might be specific, an opportunity, that would be great, please.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Or you guys have had a long night?
Real quick, real quick, Sarah. If I leave Dare County, I cross the Wright Memorial Bridge and start driving north. I'm driving through Currituck County. What I encounter on the left and the right side of the road is acre upon acre upon acre of empty field, forest, corn, soybeans, et cetera. Have you all considered anything, I know it's outside the Dare County, have you considered anything in Currituck County within ten miles of the Wright Memorial Bridge for possible development?
Or Dare mainland.
How about Eastlake?
Eastlake.
Yeah, Eastlake.
Flip the.
Belanch is way cheaper over there.
Do what?
Land is way cheaper over there.
Well.
I think we have, I'll say, one of the challenges we came up against was around the drive time.
I live on the mainland, it takes me ten minutes.
Okay, all right.
Sarah.
And, you know, if anything, if a property is in Dare County, if a property is in Dare County, we've evaluated it. It's more just, I think our stakeholder conversations so far have been that it's a, you know, let's focus on Dare. But I think that if it's, if there's specific sites and you want us to focus on Currituck, I think we can.
Well, and again.
We caution against what we've heard so far about some, I think, feedback that was received in the past when it was attempted before.
Sarah, I would, I would ask you to look at, it was mentioned as Dare County mainland. It's an area on, right off of sixty-four called Eastlake. There is, in fact, some development going on there now that's a private development. I don't know what it's going to be. But in addition to that, just a question regarding Bowser Town. We talk a lot of times on things, in fact, we had a discussion about it tonight, about buffers. Where that, where that plan is located, the treatment plant, is across the road and across a pretty good ditch. But if some type of buffering was done there, they want it out of sight, is that correct?
It's not out of sight. They don't want a property within half a mile as the pro.
Okay, so it's a distance thing, not necessarily a sight, line of sight thing.
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
Health, and it's for the health and safety of the residents, long term.
Well, take a look at Eastlake.
And I don't, you know, we're, this county is seventy-four percent water. And if a mitigating factor has to be a drive to Eastlake, you know what, we just might have to suck it up and deal with that.
All right.
Well, thank you so much.
So we'll see you all in the fall.
Ladies, we appreciate, appreciate all y'all's hard work and we look forward to hearing back from you. And sorry we were so late getting you on the agenda. We've got a pretty hefty agenda this evening, so thank you for your patience.
Great data.
I see that, thank you, thanks for having us, we appreciate it.
County manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, items seven, eight, and nine are with our waterways, and Brent Johnson's here for that.
Hey, Brent.
Gentlemen, how's it going today? So the first one that you have in front of you is the Hattersin Lint Maintenance Contract. It's the same contract that CPE or Ken Wilson's team has been doing for the last two years. This is renew that and go forward for a third year of their doing, of their construction administrative services that they have been provided. What you have in front of you is a contract to DEQ to apply for the shallow draft navigation fund, and then also the contract with CPE. Under this, under the grant fund, the portion that Dare County will be servicing is six thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. The remaining will be paid for by the state.
Motion on the floor by Vice Chairman Overman to approve, seconded by Commissioner House and Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Bobby, sorry, do I need to do anything with the resolution? Do they have to approve?
Approve it as well.
I'm sorry, Chairman, if you could also approve the resolution that is in the packet as well?
Motion is to include resolution.
All right, motion, motion by Vice Chairman, it was to include the resolution, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimous.
Thank you. Chairman, the next one you have in front of you is a similar application. This one is for the, from the Oregon Inlet Task Force. It is to modify our existing permit that will allow for the new private partner dredge to side cast. It will allow for a winder, a widener east of the bridge to reduce the amount of dredging required. And then it also allows for the overdepth in our, in our current core permit or current permit that wasn't allocated originally, like the course permit is as well. This is, in front of you is the DEQ shallow draft navigation grant application, the contract from CPE, Ken Wilson's team to do the work, and then also the resolution supporting it, the grant application.
Move to approve all in the resolution.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve. Been seconded by Commissioner Tobin, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimous.
And then the last one I have is, it's a request to approve a resolution, approving the submission to modify the federal authorization for the Hatterson-Rollinson Channel. This is under the section seven zero zero one process of the two thousand fourteen WADA. This is the bureaucratic process that exists for local sponsors to submit changes that they feel are necessary. I took this resolution from the two thousand seventeen resolution that was signed by the board, modified it for submission under the section seven zero zero one process.
Move to approve the WADA.
Is motion, motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch.
Including the resolution.
Including the resolution, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner House, further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimous.
And I just want to add with this process, it is not, this is not the quick answer. This is the three-to-five-year.
Right.
Bureaucratic process included in the two thousand twenty-two Corps of Engineers WADA with, we wouldn't see action really till two thousand twenty-three at the earliest.
Gotcha.
Process.
It is the process.
Yeah. Great, thanks so much, Brent.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Brent.
Good job.
Chairman, item ten, Dave Quast will make that presentation.
Good evening, Dave.
Good evening. Like the last meeting, I'm back again with a grant plan for COVID- nineteen. I already tell you, you've got one on your next agenda also for what's changed since I did this. So so far, we've been awarded just over two million dollars of grants. We've got.
To Dare County. We, Dare County, have over two million in COVID- nineteen grants.
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought I read.
Yeah. We've got more coming, there's two health department and actually in this number, an elections grant that got awarded last week. Another, actually, that changed today, it's more like two hundred seventy-five thousand instead of three hundred twenty-nine.
Wait, 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 don't go so fast, I'm trying to track with you, Dave.
The second line on the slide, PowerPoint.
Anticipate, the anticipate.
That three hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars changed today to about two hundred fifty, two hundred sixty thousand. But there's two health department grants and an elections grant.
What is a FEMA estimate then of six?
All right, our FEMA, we're, we're estimating cost from FEMA date is January twentieth for eligibility. So far, we're being told probably through the end of December, so we're estimating what we think will incur through that date. We filed two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars so far with a FEMA plan.
Estimate means, Bobby?
We have multiple pots of money. We're in a declaration of emergency, so FEMA kicks in just like it does for a hurricane. And so we have FEMA eligible expenses that can be used for certain things, and we spend the FEMA money on the FEMA items. And we have COVID- nineteen pots of money that are coming in that can be spent in addition to that.
It's a river, man. So what you're telling me is we've got almost three million dollars between FEMA estimate, the two fifty, and the two million plus.
That's right.
Correct.
Three million, guys.
And I will say.
The river, and it's flowing downhill.
The largest part of that is the same old story. It's a, the state relief fund is a population distribution. So relative to our load, once again, we're looking at a population distribution rather than a load distribution.
I don't even know what that means, Dave.
It's the same thing as the, the population-based sales tax.
We, our expenses are based on having three hundred thousand tourists here. Our distribution is based on having a thirty-five thousand, thirty-five thousand population, so we're not getting what we would get if we counted the visitor population.
So the three million is based on the thirty-five thousand permanent population?
Some part of that is, yes.
For the most part, yes.
Good God, could be huge.
Now, the largest part of that is the North Carolina COVID Relief Fund, which is why, mainly why we're back, is General Assembly passed, I think it was State Law twenty twenty-eighty, which wasn't really a second part, but it changed their first one. And they doubled the pot of money to be distributed. Ours, our pot increased from eight hundred fifty-two thousand to one million five hundred and seventy. And the reason why it didn't double is because they redid the total. Every county was guaranteed a minimum of two hundred fifty thousand, plus then what was on top of that was based on population. And they changed the law so that now at least twenty-five percent of the new grant total have to go to municipalities.
Yep.
And the last time we were to you, we really didn't see where that made a lot of sense because their eligible cost, for the most part, except for teleworking, were eligible for FEMA. Then what, the federal interpretation, let me say, the federal interpretation changed the last week of June. And that interpretation says that if you're, have a public safety employee or a public health employee that's not administrative, you're, they're automatically presumed to be fully dedicated to COVID- nineteen. Well, that makes all their regular salaries and fringes eligible, starting with that pot of money starting March first. So now the towns have all that to claim. So they won't have any problem using and claiming their distribution.
And that'll come out of the three ninety-two.
Yes.
Yep.
And what we recommend to you is to use the distribution among the towns, the same one that's used for occupancy tax and land transfer tax, which is their property tax levies.
But the max that they can get is the twenty-five percent, right?
No, that's the minimum.
The minimum, okay.
The twenty-five percent.
You can do what you want.
The twenty-five percent has to go to the towns, but it doesn't say how much has to go per town. So we've taken, we're.
Well, but it also says that twenty, you have to do a minimum of twenty-five percent.
Right. So if you use that distribution formula, they'll get at least that.
Okay, got you.
Then go to slide two.
If they come up lacking, let's say one of the municipalities, we do the twenty-five percent based on the tax. And their request or their, what they file is greater than what they were able to get here, do they have a mechanism for, for making up the difference?
FEMA's covering virtually everything they have.
Well, FEMA covers their overtime for, on the salary front. So all that FEMA, eligible for FEMA is what's called emergency protective measures. So everything they're doing to protect buildings, to protect staff, all their overtime that would qualify as protective measures is covered.
The answer is, if you follow the new, the regulations in every eligible expense, then no one is going to have enough, even with all that money, is going to have enough money to cover all of that. And so there's not going to, and there's no other pot. So they, they get what they get under whatever the distribution formula is. It pays for salaries that are already budgeted, so it's, it's sort of on top of what they already have. And so they're not outing anything, if you will, for those salaries.
And the county's a good example of that, and that's on the third page of the revised plan, is with that change, and we have not updated it yet for Sheriff and EMS, we've got five point six million dollars worth of reportable cost, a million, one point five million of grant. And the towns will be in the same situation. The rest of that plan that you have before you is, the original plan had three hundred and twelve, three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars for teleworking costs. IT and HR are still working out what the final policy is going to be through the end of December, so we just rounded that up to four hundred thousand and said, we will come back to you once again, once they make those decisions. You heard from, just heard about the rent problems in two thousand and nineteen. What you did the first go around was social services had a portion of this for thirty thousand dollars for a low-income energy assistance program and Interfaith Community Outreach. Got twenty-five thousand dollars for rent and utility assistance programs. They both have said that they've got what they need right now during the summer to meet their need, but they do not think that'll be the case after Labor Day and especially into October, November, and December. So.
As you know, the, all the orders and things in place have abated payments on utilities. And so we anticipate in the fall, those utilities, you don't have to pay them, but they don't go away. So they're accumulating for those people that don't pay. In the fall, when that hiatus, if you will, is over with, then those people are going to have to deal with those back utility payments and plus make the utility payments that come due from them forward. And we would anticipate that's going to be problematic, which is why we tried to increase this fund to try to help the nonprofits. this fund to try to help the nonprofits address those issues as we go forward.
Right. And so, so our recommendation in version two of the plan is to increase the social services program from 30 to 60 and the interfaith community outreach from 25,000 to 50,000. We also included the 392,000 at 25% to the municipalities. And then looking at other plans from other places and talking to some other finance directors, they said, keep it as simple as you can. We had, I did it today, March 1st through June 30th, we had 1.5 million dollars of eligible costs to report just for the health department. So when you deduct everything else that I've listed from the 1,570,000, that would leave 667,000 to report for health department, regular salaries and fringes. So our, my recommendation, our recommendation is to keep it the same as what we've seen in other places. And I'm, and I said it's simpler, but here's the 55-page report that I filed with the state today to claim those costs. But again, the plan's up to you. The plan can be changed at any time. It can be changed up until the end of December. So this is again...
Just, just so we're clear, these are costs that were part and parcel to our Health and Human Services Department that have been directed toward COVID-19 activities that we are basically being reimbursed for?
Yes, sir.
Yes and no? Yes.
I knew there was a no in there.
But for example, a salary line for an essential worker...
Yes.
Is in our budget.
Right.
So we're paying it whether we get this money or not.
Exactly, yes.
We're getting this money on top of that.
But, but the term with the grants is redirected. So you're not using that employee for what you budgeted it for.
No, I understand that. Yeah, yeah.
So therefore they're paying for it. So...
But it's not, we didn't want to hire a second HHS staff to do COVID on top of.
No, right.
So this...
We didn't, but any expense like that that we might have incurred would also be reimbursable under another place.
Right. But these will be very substantial mitigating funds for anticipated shortfalls that we had seen, that we were planning back in April when this was all transpiring.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
How much out of that, Bobby, is going to be, I'll call it new costs?
Outside of what we had budged, what, how much of...
That, mainly what we've seen so far is what we're showing you for the FEMA eligible cost. That 670,000, which like I said, we filed 214,000 so far in our estimate for things like, you know, what has to be done between now and the end of December for sanitizing buildings, for medical supplies, for personal protective equipment, for elections, for what's not covered by the elections grant.
So what I'm, what I'm really trying to get at here, Dave, then that number was what, 600,000?
670.
669.
Yeah, okay, 661. We're getting 3 million?
Well, that's, the 670 is apart from the grant money because from FEMA, with FEMA, you track cost and, and file your claim for reimbursement. And you, you have, it's the same thing as a hurricane. You have no guarantee until that final audit's done that you're getting reimbursed.
FEMA's not a pot. There's no limit on that. If you're eligible and whatever the number turns out to be is what it turns out to be, and that's what you get.
The key is the eligibility work.
Right. I, I guess what I'm trying to get at here is we're getting this pot of money and it's $3 million round numbers, part of which we, we give...
Real answer is, I don't know the answer to your question. There's, there's 660 that we know that we're going to get reimbursed for. They have to be direct expenses, COVID-related expenses. There may be others that are in that. There may be some apportionment between FEMA and COVID going forward. And we won't know until we see what happens in the coming months because we may have to come back and change the plan yet again to accommodate the unknown going forward. And so I can't, I don't know the exact number, but it's, it's fairly substantial. It's a good portion of what you heard tonight.
Where, where I was trying to get to, Bobby, and maybe I'm, I'm probably not asking the question right, is what it really boils down to. But we're going to get $3 million round numbers less what the 25% we give to the municipalities.
You're asking what part of it's not our out-of-pocket cost?
That's basically right.
And, and the answer is I don't know yet.
Well, in, in the plan you're approving, the out-of-pocket cost is the social services program, the program that's going to interfaith community outreach and the 400,000 for teleworking equipment and cost.
So far.
So worst-case scenario, it wouldn't be a drastic, substantial impact on our budget. This is something that's controllable?
You've mentioned it twice, and this is another topic, but the state treasurer has sent out two emails. When you publicly issue debt, you're required at least once a year to do what's called continuing disclosure. You have to file your audit report. You have to file a compiled budget. You have to provide information. State treasurer is now of the opinion that this is a, an event large enough that you have to file a continuing disclosure. So I spent most of the day drafting that with the help of Scott Leo or bond counsel. And we'll have it probably by the end of tomorrow and get out to everybody to review. But that, that's going to be a document I'll provide to you guys that provides a summary of, you know, what we think's happened with fiscal 20. Fiscal 21, you've got in the budget message for, for that year that you've already adopted. And, and the message is kind of not changed from what we gave you in the budget, except it's a little bit better. We haven't seen, obviously in May, we didn't see nearly the decrease in occupancy tax that we projected.
If where you're headed is what's our comfort level with the budget as we move forward, given this influx of cash, given what we've seen with the Oxy Tax, we're not out of the woods, we're not over the hump, but...
And land transfer.
And the land, but we're not where we were in March where we were wringing our hands thinking, oh, my gosh, what's going to happen either? So it's better, appears to be better so far. But again, we don't know what's going to happen, if we're going to have a huge increase that's going to cause other problems that we didn't, that you can anticipate with those kind of numbers.
And as, as we tried to explain to staff at the state treasurer's office this last Friday, we're not going to know what the June sales tax is until September 15th.
That's right.
And in that regard, we have stressed weekly to our staff to be prudent, circumspect with spending because we don't know what's coming and we just need to be ready for whatever that might be.
Got you.
Yep. Okay.
Thanks, Bob.
Just out of curiosity, Dave, the majority of that 400,000, is that related to expenses to improve the telework capabilities? Is that where the majority of that 400 is coming from?
That's, that's all of it.
That's what I thought, yeah, because I looked at the rest of that and I couldn't see where there was any funds spent otherwise.
Right.
Dave, how much of this COVID-19 funding did we assume that we would get? I'm trying to remember in the budget itself. I thought it was none.
None, correct.
Because we didn't...
So this is part of the optimism, we're not out of the woods yet.
And a part, you know, a good example is, is the second grant that's listed, 235,000 that we got as a Medicare provider, it showed up in our bank account and we had to track down what it was.
Happens to me all the time.
Yeah, I can tell.
I wish.
Usually mine's in reverse.
I wish.
So that, you know, that was not anticipated. And now we've applied for part two of that Medicare provider, which we originally told we'd have a decision on by the end of May, and then they extended the application date to the day. So even that, we're a month or two away for finding out if we get more, and we may.
We can't let our guard down because we're based on what we, the situation today.
No, no, I'm not asking for cake and ice cream. I'm just saying our assumptions are better, given today's reality than they were in March and April.
That's right.
The increase continues and we have to have more tracers and more testing and more everything, then all of a sudden, those numbers aren't as good as they once were because our expenses are going to go up significantly.
Always a ray of sunshine from the county manager.
Well, I just don't want us to, to all of a sudden think we're out of the woods when we're not.
But Bobby, when those, when those costs, and I say they are additional costs coming through, are they not things that we're going to be able to file or, or to claim back again?
Well, these pots of money are now finite, and so the question is, are there going to be more pots?
Right.
We can claim it under these pots as, as long as they occur before December 31st. But if we have them that exceed this pot or they occur later than that, then it has to have a new pot.
Yeah.
And there's, literally the guidance changes at least once a week.
I'm sure.
You know, what I told you about public health and public safety. They, they gave us that ruling and then came back and said, well, that doesn't include administrative. And then public safety doesn't include 911 and trace.
They're taking it up as they go, guys.
FEMA's sent something else that's, it's not eligible for FEMA costs because health, health departments are more suited to handle and pay for the program or something like that. But they picked out that one thing. So there'll be things like that, keep, that'll keep going as it goes on.
So you need a motion to approve the planned version two and adopt amendment to the grant project order, is that correct? Is there a motion to do so?
I'll make that motion.
Second, sir.
Commissioner Couch moved, seconded by Vice Chairman Overman and Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Dave.
Chairman, item 11 is an easy one for you.
Yep.
We got, on August 6th, the Association of County Commissioners having their annual meeting. It's going to be done virtually and you all need to appoint a voting delegate to that meeting.
To appoint Robert L. Woodard.
Can I have a second?
There's a motion on the floor to appoint Robert L. Woodard. There was a second by, was it Tobin? Commissioner Tobin? Any further discussion?
I just think that you don't have anything else to do.
I know. I go to those, I go to those meetings all the time.
I think you just regret not driving all the way to the Higginson or Alexville or something.
I'd rather do it virtual than having to go. Thank you. Motion, motion on the floor to approve those, pardon?
I'm waiting for you to finish.
I don't think we never, we, and they didn't ask for an alternate this time. They did?
Yeah, they did.
All right. Then the vice chair. Take a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, item 12 is a consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have the approval of the minutes. You have the DHS Social Services Division Adoption Promotion Fund. You have a reimbursement resolution for fiscal year 2021, vehicle and equipment financing. You have the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program, local government resolution, tax collectors' report, the 2020 update of the CRS program for public information, Dare County Code, Chapter 92 Emergency Management Update, Emergency Operations Plan Update, Health and Human Services, Public Health WIC Special Funding, and the Revised Memorandum of Understanding between the National Park Service and Dare County.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Vice Chair Overman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next are your board appointments. Tonight, you have the Eastlake Community Center Board. Ted Himmelwright's term expires this month, and he'd like to be reappointed for another three-year term. Motion to reappoint?
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman to reappoint. Is there a second by Vice Chairman Overman? Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the ABC Board. The term of Phil Scarborough Sr. expires in August of 2020. He's recommended for a reappointment for another term.
Move to reappoint?
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to reappoint. Is seconded by Vice Chair Overman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next you have the Long Cheese Community Center. The terms for Joyce T. Meekins and Robert L. Walton expire. Both would like to be reappointed to serve in the Long Cheese Community Center.
Move to reappoint.
Motion on the floor by the Vice Chair to reappoint. Is seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And finally, you have the Older Adult Services Advisory Council. The council currently has a mainland representative vacancy. The applications have been received from Angelo Sinesso and Barbara Franchi. The advisory council has requested the board to select. We do have a mainland representative, so Commissioner Tobin serves on that. So the, the mainland is represented and you can choose between these.
Move to appoint Barbara Franchi.
There's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman to approve Barbara Franchi. Is seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
That be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to item 13, Commissioner's Business. Commissioner Ross, do you mind kicking it off this evening?
I will do so, Mr. Chairman, and be very brief. We at the Almirall Council have hired a new executive director. His name is Michael Irvin. He has a vast background and experience in local government, was most recently the Director of the Town or City of Edenton Historical Society, is widely known throughout the 10 county region, and are very pleased to, to welcome him as our new executive director. And that is all the news I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner House?
One small step for a man, one giant leap for mankind. Those words were heard today from Neil Armstrong in 1969 as he landed our first American astronaut and first human on the moon. A very significant history of ours. From the sands of Kitty Hawk to the moon and back, Neil Armstrong, when he made that famous walk on his person in one of his pockets, he had a small piece of sateen and a small spur of wood from the Wright Brothers flyer that flew here in Kitty Hawk. And those two objects are now on display at the Wright Brothers National Memorial. NASA was formed in 1958, so if you look at it, within 11 years, from an agency being formed, we put a man on the moon. In only nine and a half years, after President Kennedy made the speech to safely put a man on the moon and back to Earth, that was our day in history. We've had a long meeting tonight, and I don't really want to drag on with a whole bunch of other stuff. And we've had some very important stuff to go over tonight. It's been kind of grueling. And there's one thing that certainly during the COVID-19 experience that we've had, we've, we've not had a lot of. But we do have SIS, and something that all of us enjoy watching, and it's something to add a little bit of light to our meeting. We have a pet of the week. Maui is an energetic two-year-old.
Our pet of the week for this week is Maui. Maui is our newest canine resident who just arrived from another shelter. He's around two years old and is a happy, lovable goofball. This energetic fella absolutely loves playing ball and he loves humans. We think Maui would be great with other appropriate dog-friendly doggos, and he would make the most handsome Brindle addition to almost any family. To adopt Maui or foster one of our other animals, please call us to schedule an appointment to meet them. And please remember to wear a mask when you come. We want to keep sending out the reminder to our awesome OBX community that we are still encouraging folks to foster our animals. Whether you can commit to one weekend or several months, we need you. Our kennel is full and we have kittens coming out our ears. Remember that fostering saves lives and you will be leaving a lasting impact on the lives of these homeless pets. For more information about how to foster, please visit our website at www.obxspca.org or visit our OBX SPCA Facebook page.
So remember, with our travel restrictions on, you don't have to go to Hawaii to get Maui. Just go down to the man who SPCA and pick her up. Thank you.
Good stuff, Steve. Man, it's hard to believe. Been 51 years since we landed on the moon. And then the invention of flight to landing on the moon, 66 years, that, that's pretty incredible.
Exactly.
That blows you mind.
Isn't it staggering? 66 to put...
66 to put him on the moon, and it's been 51 since then.
Yeah. It's just.
What's going to happen in the next 51? I hope it's all, yeah, I hope it's all good, man.
The Jets, the Jetsons.
The Jetsons.
The Jetsons.
I'm thinking of something a little more substantial.
Or the Flintstones.
Depending on which way we go. Attaboy, Jim. Always looking forward.
Not only that, but now they got airplanes, you can't even see them.
Oh, man, incredible stuff. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just like to remind everyone to stay vigilant regarding COVID-19. Wear your mask, wash your hands.
Thank you, sir.
Stay six feet apart.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bateman?
Y'all talking about 57 years, and Mr. Bateman just wants to get through this summer. I'm good. Just happy to be here.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Couch?
Yes, sir. It really hurts to see the Cape Hatter Saggers Club and the Nags Head Surf Fishing Club tournaments. I mean, these are two of the oldest, most widely known surf fishing tournaments in the nation, and that's a, you know, I'm not an economist, but, you know, it's about a $4 million hit.
Wow.
And, yes, and these, these are the first weekends in November, last October, first couple of weeks in November, and they're such important shoulder season events. Hopefully, I mean, things are rolling. Our economy is smoking hot. You can't even put your finger on it, it's hot to the touch. But hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to absorb that. Ferry Division was able to get the motor vessel, the ferry Croatan into Rodanthe, so even though they had some challenges, the superintendent there called it marginal getting into Stumpy Point, it was passable. So it looks like here at this point, last week of July, that we're going to be, hopefully, it's like insurance, you got to have it, but hopefully, we won't need it. If we get into an active hurricane season and something happens, God forbid, fingers crossed with our road, looks like we'll be able to, we're ahead of the game at this point with emergency ferry. And last, Commissioner Tobin, the county manager, myself and Bob, you had a last-minute emergency. We heard a, we continue to get educated on what our options are here with shoreline erosion control. We heard a very good, very informative presentation from a group about, they could have some ramifications on several projects we're working on with Dare County Waterways and Oregon Inlet Task Force. And as we continue to move forward with these guys, there's a lot of good information out there that we're getting, and hopefully, we'll be able to implement some of it. But it was a busy week, and I appreciate all, everybody's efforts. You know, we're essentially full-time county employees, if you want to look at it. That way, everybody's busy. It's a good group. I'm proud to be a part of it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tobin?
Okay, last week, we had a meeting of the Oregon Inlet Task Force, and a couple really good things happened at that meeting. The Coast Guard was giving us a presentation and let us know that they are actually putting channel markers in the crack between Walter Slough and the fishing center. It's, it's unbelievable that they're doing it, but they ran it up the mast and we were able to do it. Yeah, it's a big, big, big step. And also at that meeting, we finalized the review of the vessel construction contract between EJE and Conrad, and I drafted a letter, and it said, Mr. Judson Whitehurst, after a thorough review of the vessel construction contract between EJE Dredging Services and Conrad Shipyard, and after consultation with the Dare County Attorney, the Dare County Oregon Inlet Task Force has found the contract to be in compliance with all specifications and requirements set forth in the dredge work plan and forgivable loan agreement. We hereby authorize EJE Dredging Services to proceed with the execution of this contract July 20, 2020. So as of today, they can move forward and sign the contract.
Super.
Big step.
Yeah, absolutely.
So maybe they sign it tomorrow?
I hope so.
I know they're ready to.
And Dave, they'll, when they do sign it, we have 30 days to give them the 10%.
Good stuff.
Yeah. And there was some good stuff in the contract, too, that we got changed. We got from six months to a year's worth of warranty on it, which is a big, big, big deal. And also, as far as paying the bills, they had some crazy short timelines, and we got them extended out. It's a good thing.
Great. Man, let's hope they can sign that and get that back to us.
And 18 months from signing to completion.
Wow.
Sorry, I just cleared my throat. And there's, there's penalties.
I was getting ready to say.
There's penalties levied on.
There's penalties in there if they don't get it.
If, if they don't execute.
Super.
But wow. Good thing.
Absolutely.
We're going to be done before the, before his project.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Let me mention, one other thing that I failed to mention a while ago. Early in the meeting, county manager went through a listing of our service pin recipients.
Yeah.
And those folks represented 130 years.
Yeah.
Of service to Dare County.
Six feet.
And that's, that's pretty darn impressive.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, and especially one of them with Tonda, I remember her first day at Dare County EMS. So, I mean, she's, and she's an excellent paramedic, so.
I'm going to move for a closed session, but before I do that, but county manager, you have anything on your list?
I have two things. One is, last week, representatives of Dominion Power came to see me to just give us an update. You'll see some survey trucks on the bypass out there. They're working towards and looking at and trying to evaluate the need for an additional transmission line down the bypass. They're looking at alternatives such as underground on the east side, underground on the west side, overhead, whatever their options are, they're in their preliminary stages, just trying to find out what's under the ground, what's there, what their problems are, what their conflicts are. Once they got some more information and have a plan and to know what they're going to do, or if they're going to do it, they said they would come back in and talk to both our board and to the Nags Head Board to let the public know what they were doing, where they were headed, and what was going on there. But that was a preliminary update from them. So I wanted you to know, and wanted the folks that are seeing on TV to know that if you see the trucks and the surveyors out on the bypass, that's what they're doing. They're doing the initial stages of trying to figure out what to do to get more power between a substation at 8th Street, which they call the Colicke Station, and a Nags Head substation down lower in Nags Head. So that's an update on that. They'll come back to us in the future with true details and opportunity for you guys to ask questions if you have questions.
They give you any idea on their Causeway project?
They're working on it, and they're still don't have all their easements, and they had asked us about trying to help them get an easement. We referred them to Andy Garman over at Talon Nags Head, who had, who knew some of those people from the talent, and he's helped them get some of those easements. But if you're asking me timeframes and all that, I don't know that yet. I can, I'll try to find out. The second thing I have is, we've been working with WUNC Radio for a while, trying to get a lease agreement together for them to put a broadcast tower on top of the Buxton Tower to relay their signal down there. We've got all that worked out. We had done the resolution and the notice at a previous meeting. You all had already seen that. And now we finally have the lease. I didn't get it in time to get it on the agenda. But it's our standard lease that we've used a number of times before. It's a five-year term, it's got two five-year renewals, it's got a 7.5% escalator at each renewal, and it's got, the initial rate's $21,600 a year, and I need you all to approve that and authorize us to sign the approval resolution.
Move, approve. Move, yep.
Motion on the floor to approve by Commissioner, Commissioner House, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing, hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Bobby. Dorothy? Sorry, late evening tonight.
I'm okay.
Okay.
Sorry about waking you up.
Thank you.
Thanks for your help today, too.
Finance Director Dave, you got anything else for us?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you all so much. Sorry for the lateness. I'd like to make a motion to pursue, pursue it to NCGS 143.318.116 to go into closed session to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, fitness, and conditions of appointment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee.